Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for July 16th at the City of Glendale. May we have a roll call, Ms. Stotler?
Commissioner Landergin. Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Yasayan.
Here.
Commissioner Menuchyan. Chair Astorian.
I'm here. And so, the report regarding posting of the agenda, Ms. Stotler?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, July 9th, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Mr. Lee, we will follow in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so, our next item is approval of minutes from June 4th, 2014. Anybody who wants to make a comment or make changes?
Move talk set.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good. We don't need a roll caller, do we? Excellent. So, the next item on the planning agenda schedule would be the public hearing and oral communications, that's item number five. I do have one card from Erica Kemp, if you would please come forward. And I believe, Ms. Stotler, she has, what, half hour? Five minutes, very good. Very good. Your name and your name for the record, please.
All right. My name is Erica Kemp. I'm here because I'm the director of an organization, a nonprofit organization here called Go Glendale. We aim to reduce congestion and improve mobility in the City of Glendale by working mostly with large employers on their commute benefits with their employees, so getting people to try using alternative modes, or carpooling, or just thinking about the way that they're getting around. The reason I'm here today is because I'm working on a grant-funded project with the City of Glendale and also Burbank and Pasadena. The project now, we're calling it Go Verdugo, and we're making an effort to go around and explain what we're up to, to all of the different cities in the commission, so we'll also be talking to the Parking and Transportation Commission of the City of Glendale as well. But, to give you guys a real quick update on what we're doing, it's set to launch in October. It'll be an app and a website that allows employees and residents of those three cities to go in and explore their travel options, so whether that's walking, biking, taking transit, driving, carpooling, vanpooling, it'll be a one-stop shop for that information. And then, they'll also have access to prizes and subsidies and, you know, some social media so they can share what they're doing. The reason that we're making sure, especially that all the cities know what we're doing is there will also be an opportunity for the cities to put out information to participants on this app or website. So, we just want to make sure that, you know, that we're in touch with all of the city officials who can put out information about if there are road closures or other types of, you know, important notices that we can get out to the people who are participating. So, I gave you, there's a little fact sheet, a little mock-up of what the website is going to look like, and also my business card, so if you have any questions, I'd encourage you to contact me.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp.
Thank you.
Next item would be zoning appeals I seen on. We don't have any zoning appeals, Ms. Stotler, correct? And so, we are going to go first to old business. And the agenda item under the old business has to deal with 1229 Vista Superba Drive, which continues from May 7th and 21st consecutively, and then afterwards from June 4th, 2014. And this is variance case number PVAR 1238084. The appellant and the applicant is Merod Hmatti, and this is an R1R zone, and I am going to have Mr. Kiesel take the helm.
All right. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. The applicant appellant is proposing to construct a new, approximately 1,200-square-foot residence on a vacant 4,213 square-foot lot located at 1229 Vista Superba Street. Initially, the project required approval of a conditional use permit and variances. The conditional use permit was to allow the construction of a new dwelling unit on a lot having an average current slope of 77 percent, and a lot width less than 55 feet. The variances were to allow the construction of a new dwelling unit on a lot less than 7,500 square feet, and to provide only one directly accessible covered and enclosed parking space. Initially, planning staff recommended approval of these discretionary applications, however, on December 2nd of last year, the planning hearing officer denied the conditional use permit and various applications that were at the time associated with the project. So, the four discretionary actions were denied by the planning hearing officer. The applicant appealed that decision, those decisions. Following the hearing officer's decision, ordinance 5819 removed the conditional use permit requirements for lot slope and width, and the CUP application was withdrawn. So, there is no longer a need for conditional use permit approval on the project. Also, after the planning hearing officer's decision, staff discovered that the west side of Vista Superba Street has a four-foot street front setback, which the city council adopted by an ordinance in 1950. The decreased front setback, going from what R1R is typically a 15-foot down to a four-foot, allowed the applicant to slightly redesign the project to accommodate a second directly accessible covered and enclosed parking space. Therefore, the variance request for only providing one parking space is now no longer needed. So, the one remaining variance that you're looking into is for lot size, having a lot size less than 7,500 square feet. The municipal code states that the Planning Commission may remand projects back to the hearing officer if the commission determines new and material evidence not previously presented to the officer is available, and such evidence could not reasonably be produced prior to the hearing. The four-foot street front setback was information not presented or known at the planning hearing officer hearing. However, the design of the residence with the second garage space remains very similar to the design of the residence when the discretionary permits were heard by the planning hearing officer. The location of the residence really does not change. The footprint of the residence, as well as the upper floor plan, remain virtually the same, with the exception of the second one-car garage provided between the residence and the street. So, aside from that one garage, everything remains the same. On the lower level, the second garage initially, and the second bedroom and bathroom have been eliminated and replaced with crawl space. Since the design of the residence hasn't changed significantly, and the variance for lot size is really not affected by the four-foot street front setback, staff believes that the Planning Commission can appropriately render a decision on the appeal of the remaining variance requesting a reduced lot size. As I mentioned before, the planning officer denied the variance request and based the decision on, and I'm just summarizing, summarizing her decision, or the reasons for her decision. The first one was the lot was purchased long after the effective date of the ordinance, restricting development of small lots. I believe the ordinance was enacted in 1993, that required the 7,500-square-foot minimum lot size. This lot was last purchased by the applicant just a couple years ago. The second argument was the lot, or the site, was not uniquely small. Adams Hill has a lot of small lots. The owner had options to make the site larger. And then finally, adjacent lots of the same or smaller size were developed before the 1993 ordinance restricting small lot development. And your staff report contains a more expanded view of the planning hearing officer's decision. While the hearing officer denied this discretionary applications, she found that the proposed residence was generally consistent with the hillside development review policy that new homes also have to meet. Planning staff continues to believe that findings for granting lot size variance can be made. There are constraints, including adjacent development and the public walk immediately north of the subject site, that make it practically difficult and present an unnecessary hardship to meet the minimum 7,500-square-foot requirement. There are exceptional circumstances applicable to the property in that the R1R zone is one of the single-family zones reserved for hillside properties. Most of the neighborhood-zoned R1R were subdivided later than Adams Hill. This area was subdivided in the, I believe, early to mid-20s, 1920s. And most of the lots zoned R1R are subdivided into larger, they're larger sizes. Properties along Corona Drive to the south are vacant, but not for sale currently. And if incorporated into the subject site would form sort of an L-shaped lot, which really isn't consistent with the development pattern in that area. The applicant basically has done a commendable job balancing compliance with the development standards with proposing a well-designed, modest, single-family house. Since, well, the past 14 years, since 2000, 14 of the 18 lot-size variance requests have been approved. Reasoning used to justify these previous approvals, which can be used in the present case include, while the city's goal is to consolidate lots to achieve conforming lot area, it was really not possible in this case. The second reasoning, there is no appropriate use for the property other than a single-family house. The lot was created specifically for single-family development. Many properties have been adequately developed with similar lot sizes throughout the city. And then finally, the houses proportional in size and scale to the houses in the surrounding Granting the variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare, or injurious to the property or the neighborhood. There were no significant impacts identified in the environmental review performed on the project. And with the exception of lot size, the project complies with all the development standards of the R1R zone. Also, the majority of neighborhood houses are developed on lots that are less than 7,500 square feet. Granting of the variance will not be contrary to the objectives of the ordinance, in that the project site as 4,340 square feet is larger than the averages of lots on both Vista Superba and Corona Drive. And that would preserve the surrounding neighborhood and is consistent with the surrounding development. And then, staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with the residential district additional ROS R1R development standards. I'm not going to go over that, but that was outlined in your staff report. It is recommended that the Planning Commission adopt the negative declaration for the project and overturn the planning hearing officer's decision to deny variance case number PVAR That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiesel. Now, we have a choice. I can have my colleagues ask questions from Mr. Kiesel now, or go to public and have folks that have any points of view on this speak first, and then we can start doing what we need to do. Is that all right with you all? Very good. So, I am going to go and ask folks that have filled out cards to speak on this subject. Now, Ms. Stotler, I believe Mr. Hmatti is the applicant and the appellant.
Correct.
Should we start with him and then continue on?
Yes.
So, Mr. Hmatti, please do come to the podium and state your name, and then your case. You have 15, I believe, minutes?
15.
Right.
Good evening.
You don't need to take the entire 15 minutes, you know. It's just a suggestion.
No, I have only two pages. I already actually provided these two pages for you guys, in case I'm missing something. But, four years ago, in May 2010, we purchased a single lot on Vista Superba Street in City of Glendale. By the way, I'm sure you know that, the street of Vista Superba, at the middle of it, is split to the City of Los Angeles and City of Glendale. Therefore, this is the only lot that remains on City of Glendale. There is one or two more lots on the City of Los Angeles side. At that time, it was the only vacant lot on the street. We initially met shortly thereafter with the staff of the City of Glendale Planning Department. At the meeting, the staff suggested that we consider purchasing the second lot and consolidate the two lots into one project site, so as to more closely comply with the neighborhood minimum lot size requirement. We followed their suggestion, and we purchased the second lot adjacent to the first in September 2010, four years ago almost. Our consolidated lot is located in a residential neighborhood that features single-family homes situated on the lots on its north, south, east, and west sides. While our lot is narrow and steep, most of the other lots have similar characteristics, and majority of them are smaller than ours. And I have the neighborhood survey, it's attached to my letter for you guys. The City of Glendale Planning Department staff has already noted in their report on our proposed project, none of the homes on Vista Superba Street conform to the today's city building requirements, including lot size, height, number of the parking, building footprints, and living space, site setbacks, or even FAR. I mean, I have the survey for you, you can look at it. There are over, the maximum FAR is 30 percent, and majority of more than that, and actually one of them is 60 percent, it's double size as the requirement. Taking this existing non-conformity into the consideration, the 1,200-square-feet home that we would like to build on our consolidated lot is a very reasonable proposal that will be consistent with all zoning regulations. Please see the survey and photograph that we already attached, and we already provided to the city staff. The house that we would like to build is intended to be a personal home for our son and his future family. Our son has worked very hard to become a well-educated and accomplished individual, and he desires to be a part of a neighborhood in which he will live. He and my wife, by the way, my wife, she's the licensed architect that designed this and many other homes, the leader of whom is a licensed architect, have taken great pains to concern themselves with the quality and the integrity of the design of his future home, as well as the harmony with the design of the homes that already exist in this neighborhood. We therefore, we would like to ask you to approve this project based on the City Glendale Planning Department staff recommendation submitted, including the hardship for the lot size, as there is no other land available to us for purchase, to increase the size. If you approve the project, City of Glendale obviously may collect $6,000 property tax that's for next 30 years versus inverse condemnations and buy back our property for $200,000. And there is a reason that I cannot extend the square footage of the lot, because on my south side, there are two lots, I mean, one of them, I mean, both of them belongs to Dr. James. He lives on a 2,754 square feet, actually based on the assessor's office, but his home is much larger than 3,000 square feet. And it's situated on a only 2,000-square-feet lot. He owns the lot below, therefore, by selling it to me, it means he's going to make his home more non-conforming, because even right now, his lots together is about 4,000 square feet. By selling one, it makes it 2,000 square feet, it's non-conforming. On the north side, there is a public walkway, it's about five feet. I already spent time, and I went through, even the city vacate that walkway and give it to me, half of it, I cannot even buy the next-door, I mean, lot again, because that lot is about 2,100 square feet. Even buying that one is not going to add total to the 7,500 square feet. If I go further to north, there is a house that owns Lot 13 and 6, and that's non-conforming right now. By selling it to me, it makes it more non-conforming, and also, he cannot do that, because it's part of, I mean, one lot. Therefore, I'm bonded with the walkway and the house on south side, and there is no other property to purchase. That's why we call it as a hardship and unreasonable for not having a home on it, because of the map act, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with it. I have pictures of the homes surrounding my home, my property. I don't have, actually intend to leave it, but I can give it to you guys to just...
Well, if that's given to us, that becomes part of public record, and we get to keep it. Unless you want to have copies made of it, or whatever.
That's okay, I have the...
Also, Mr. Hmatti, for your information, the City of Glendale does not keep the entire property tax, but somewhere close to about 12 to 13 percent of that comes to the City of Glendale. Not that it's going to have any...
But the school district, they're going to enjoy more.
Not that it's going to have any bearing on the decision.
No, I know, but I'm saying, I mean, most of the money actually goes for the school district, obviously.
Thank you. All right. So, any questions from Mr. Hmatti? You may be seated, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Let's hear the rest of the folks that have filled cards for this case. Michael Wishhausen, did I pronounce it correctly?
You did fantastically.
Oh, cool.
Compared to what I've heard before. It's Wish-Husen.
Wish-Husen.
But I will take no insult to that great attempt. I wanted to speak to a few things about the development of this lot. Number one is if the variances are all approved, and he does, you know, venture out from La Jolla to build this property for his son out here in Glendale, that would also open up approximately 15 lots on Corona Drive for the same type of development, in addition to three on Superba. So, what that impact would have in the area is currently, and this goes to address the parking as well, he suggested something about a lift, I don't want to get into that too much, about how that probably won't be used on a daily basis, and whatever automobiles come to and fro this house on their grocery runs, et cetera, will be using street parking. Currently, the street parking in this area is absolutely horrendous. The garbage truck has to back up into Vista Superba, can't go in it headway, and it takes four or five stops to get it to an angle where it can actually back up. To add more parking spaces to this area would be very detrimental to the area as well. Fire, same issue, they have a hard time getting their fire truck just up and around the corners, as it is with the street parking. Another issue is because of the parking in Adams Hill, it's also driving down the price per square foot of all the residences on Adams Hill. Currently, Adams Hill is averaging about $319 per square foot. These homes have fantastic views, beautiful views of the valley. Other areas in the flatlands, just below, in the same zip code of 91206, are averaging $494 a square foot. The difference is, people don't want to have to deal with driving up and down that windy street on a clear sunny day and navigating around cars that aren't parked closely to the curb. It's already a terrible, and picture that on a cloudy rainy night, and it gets even worse. I can't imagine that the homeowners here will actually be using off-street parking at all. The next item I've got is, again, if you approve them, then we're looking at many, many more lots, many, many more cars coming up into Adams Hill, using this case as a reason why you should approve their much smaller homes as well. I think that the gentleman said that none of the existing homes match current building standards, that's absolutely inaccurate. It's not none of the homes, some of them don't, but not none of them. And that's where, that's my main concern right now, is the property values of each and every homeowner on Adams Hill. It's very difficult to sell up there right now as it is, as opposed to a home in the flatlands with no view whatsoever, in much poorer condition. And it's one of the few hills in Southern California that actually is worth less with a view, let alone the City of Glendale. So, that's what I have to say. Anybody have any question for me?
Any questions for the speaker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Mr. Rafi Barbarian. This was an easy one for me.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I wasn't prepared to speak, but I'm going to speak anyway on behalf of my parents. I grew up in Glendale, it's about 24 years I lived directly below this property on Corona Drive. And those 24 years, Adams Hill is a beautiful community to live in. I went to school here, but also I've seen the ugly side of Adams Hill as well. I've seen the El Nino effect on that hillside. I've seen the growth in amount of cars that are parked on the street. This building development can only add to that. It's not going to make it any better. The quality of life that Michael had mentioned will only decrease. I would like to maintain that quality of life in Glendale, specifically Adams Hill. It's a very little quaint little area, we'd like to keep it that way. The reason why this property is still available is because it's an undesirable lot, that's the only reason why. And this gentleman wants to build on that. The other thing is that street right above Vista Superba is split into two, as you know, one side Glendale, one side LA. There's two public service trucks that go every week, one from Glendale, one from City of LA. That includes UPS, garbage pickup, not to mention the fire trucks as well. As it is, that street is very narrow for fire truck access, so adding another property will only inhibit trucks from going up there. So, please, I beg you to deny this variance and the building of this property. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from Mr. Barbarian? Please have your seat, thank you. Next speaker is Ryan Sarkisian.
Hello, my name is Ryan Sarkisian. I live at 1225 Vista Superba, which is right next door to it. Parking is one of the main issues on this street, because you can only park on one side of the street, it's so narrow. So, that one side is parking for all the homes on both sides of the street. By building property, we're going to be losing about at least one car space for the driveway and add more cars. Sometimes we have to park down the street, because a lot of the homes on the LA side, or some of the homes on the LA side, rent their downstairs units, so there's tenants as well, and it's a mess. My main problem with this project is that that property that the applicant purchased about four years ago belonged to somebody who had bought it in a tax sale. He came and knocked on our door, and same thing, the other side neighbor, and offered it to us. At the time, we came to the city, and they said, you can't really do anything with it. I said, why don't we, you know, combine it to, even if we vacate that walkway, can we combine it to our lot? They said, no, it can't be, it's under 7,500 square feet. How about building a garage? Nope, it has to be 15 feet away. Could we put a fence around it? Nothing. So, they told us we couldn't do anything. Nobody mentioned variances and, you know, combining it with less than 7,500 square feet. Now, we see that sign sitting there, it says, on a vacant 4,200-square-foot lot, that is not a 4,200-square-foot lot, that's a 2,100-square-foot lot. The other lot that he purchased is from Corona, and those two lots will never be able to be combined unless, you know, he builds and goes over the second lot. So, he's actually asking to build on a 2,100-square-foot lot, he's going to reach over to the second one, so it's, the two lots are attached. The lot beneath us came to us to sell it to us as well, and when I came to the city, this was about three months ago, well, six months ago, and I talked to Vilia there, and she said, no, you can't combine it, it's less than 4,200. The only way you can do is build something that goes over that property line. So, we're not able to increase our property size, we're not able to call our lot 4,200 square feet, but... We're not able to call our lot 4,200 square feet, but this property hasn't had a problem to do that even before the last ordinance passed, which is, you know, we didn't even know about. So, that's my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sarkisian. And the next speaker is Mr. Winston James.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Winston James, and I am the other immediate neighbor to this lot, 1229, about 1235. A number of problems that are quite troubling to me. One has been the process of actually reaching the stage. On the 7th of May, the meeting was canceled. I actually work in Orange County, and I came back from work in order, you can imagine the traffic at that time, to get here at 5 o'clock. I got here at 5 o'clock, and I was told that the meeting will not take place. It would not take place because apparently it wasn't put in the local newspaper. Whose fault it was, why it wasn't in the newspaper is not clear to me. Then, we were told that the meeting would next take place on the 21st. I came here on the 21st. That was also canceled. Then, it was moved to July, whatever it is.
Fourth.
Fourth, not fourth, whatever. It's, you know, the other one where you, they would actually ask for a postponement, which is to this date. So, there is this process that has taken place, and what is interesting is that the applicant was never here on those occasions. So, he was told that the meetings wouldn't take in place, but I and my neighbors weren't told. We came here, wasted our time and energy, and then simply told that the meeting has been postponed. It seems to me that there ought to be a greater level of equity between applicant and people who are objecting to the application, and there hasn't been that even-handedness in this process. So, that's a part of the process that I was really worried about. The other thing is that I've actually submitted documents. I've read in the detailed report online that there weren't any comments. That is not true. People came here and commented, and they submitted written documents. They submitted a detailed letter objecting to the project and outlining the basis of the objection. Now, I have it here, and I want to put it in the record so that you see it, because apparently you haven't seen the version that was sent on the 26th of September, 2013. So, I'm wondering, I looked at the documents and said, is there an appendix with, you know, comments from residents? Absolutely nothing, as if there's no objection. I object to this project vehemently. And there are a number of problems, and some of which have been identified already by other speakers. It seems to me that there's a sort of indulgence that is being demanded or being requested by the applicant, which is unreasonable. To construct a new dwelling unit on a lot having an average current slope of 77% is not allowed, right? The zoning regulations stipulate that the slope should not exceed 50%. So, he's asking for an allowance on the basis of 54% above the regulation. There is the whole business of the width. It's 55 feet wide, 80 feet is the regulation. I bought my house at the height of the market in 2005. I bought it with the understanding, I did structural surveys of the property, I had a structural engineer look at it, made sure, I got earthquake insurance, I did all sorts of stuff. And I also knew that people couldn't build on the property beside me. That is the knowledge with which I spend, I have a lot of money. I'm a university professor. I, you know, I'm not rich. Despite my accent, by the way, I've been, I'm an American citizen, and I've been living here, first in Manhattan and then in New York and here in California over the last nine years. So, I wouldn't have bought it if I had expected somebody to come and put something else there beside me. And what is interesting, too, is that it actually affects, it actually states that thing doesn't have any impact on neighbors. It certainly affects the neighbors. It certainly affects me in a very profound way. I actually want to open windows on the north side, and what I'll have is a wall next to me, right? There are all these, and there's the whole precedent that people have mentioned that this would set. There are lots of little lots on Corona that people then ask to build on. The fact is that the buyer knew that these regulations had existed. He approached me about buying my second lot, which is down on Corona, right? We talked about that, and he knew about the difficulties that buying that lot would pose in relation to meeting the existing ordinance and regulations of the city. Now, I assume that you have laws and you have rules for purpose. You've told, people in the office told my neighbor that they couldn't even buy it to put their, park their cars, which would have been far less, more straightforward. But instead, this person is being, you know, asking to build something that is far more substantial and far more detrimental in many ways to the wider neighborhood. I was delighted when the committee rejected the project. And I'm a bit surprised that there's this persistent on the part of the applicant to try and overturn that objection that was put forward. I beseech you and urge you to object again. Thank you. And I'll put these in the record, including some photographs.
Thank you, Mr. James.
And there's a petition, by the way, that was signed by...
Thank you, Mr. James. The next speaker on the subject is Sophia Estrada.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sophia Estrada, and I'm a neighbor on Vista Superba on the Glendale side. I have about eight points that I want to make. First of all, I am a neighbor, and I have not been consistently getting the letters for these meetings. I only found out because I called Mr. Kessler yesterday, or a couple days ago, and he told me. So, it seems that, again, to what Mr., the previous speaker said, it's just you guys aren't following the process or not all the neighbors are knowing about these meetings. So, that's my first point. My second point is, he mentioned, the applicant mentioned that he has a son who's going to move in. We all know that a son is going to get married or potentially get married, and the family's going to get larger. With a one-bedroom house or a two-bedroom house, it's just, for me, I feel like that garage will eventually get converted into a room that will eventually become a dwelling place. There's 13 houses on the Glendale side. I just did a quick survey before I came down here. Of the 13 homes, 70% of them misuse their garage, okay? There's four of us here, 75% of us who are here do not use our garage properly. That means we either don't park our two cars, or park only one car, or have converted the garage into something else. Okay, that's the Glendale side. On the LA side, there's 13 homes also equally misusing the garage. There's also three homes on the LA side that rent their units or their bedrooms, okay? So, now we're talking about 26 homes in that street who are only parking on one side, and 75% of those homes are misusing their garage. The probability of this home misusing their parking, it is large, okay? Maybe not the son, but when the son moves out and realizes he has children, like I do, the house, he's outgrown his house, and he will sell, okay? A new family will come in and potentially convert that garage into a living space. Number three, the two lots that are vacant in the Los Angeles side have been denied over and over and over building. Why not Glendale? Okay? So, those lots are not going to be built on because it's been deemed that it's impossible. I don't know what the particulars are of the slope, but just know that those two lots have been, are not allowed to build. We've already talked about the two Fedexes, the two UPS trucks, the two trash trucks, the two letter carriers that come up there. You don't live there. You don't hear the amount of noise and traffic that comes through that street. And these trucks have to back up because that's the only way that they can get out. There's no way for a big truck to do a three-point turn. The majority of the cars that park in that street are already parking in the driveway. So, when people come in to deliver the newspaper, they have to back out. They can no longer do a three-point turn because all of us are already parking on our driveway. The fire truck, the last time the fire truck was there, I had to back up my car and go all the way around the hill to get to where I needed to go, because there was somebody who was sick, and the fire truck was there, and the ambulance was there. I'm a good driver, but if you get somebody who cannot back up, you've got a problem. My last concern is we will be inconvenienced. So, yes, I oppose this project. We will be greatly inconvenienced. You've got 26 families on that street that will be greatly inconvenienced. Nobody's asked us how we feel about it. There's one vacant lot that's partially, there's a vacant lot that's partially built, and that home, I think the owner ran out of money. It was just too difficult and too costly to build. It's become an eyesore. Kids come and hang out there. This vacant lot, it poses no threat to anybody. It's a vacant lot. Weeds grow on there, but you know what? It poses no threat. This home that was attempted to be built, but the builder ran out of money, that's eyesore now. It's a, I don't think it's abandoned, but they boarded it up because kids try to break into it. But that's an example of a planner trying to build something and running out of money. So, those are my points. I think for the record, I oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Estrada. Ms. Sutter, do I get to have Mr. Hamadi address any one of the comments, if he wishes to?
Yes, as long as you've gone through all the cards, he's welcome to have rebuttal. We generally give him five minutes.
I have gone through every card that is stamped or marked Vista Superba.
Then, it would be preferable...
Is there anybody else here that wants to talk on this subject or speak on this subject? No, I see not. So, Mr. Hamadi, you have five minutes to address some of the concerns of the families on that street.
I actually summarize. I mean, they are saying about the parking, I have two parking accessible from the street. Therefore, as far as the zoning, I have two parkings. And the issue of the parking is not going to solve by my lots or built or not, because as she said, most of them, 70% of the residents, they are not using their garage. I mean, they are asking to, and then my project to use as a garage, that's a different issue. As far as fire, this is based on the fire department review, this is going to be the safest home in the entire neighborhood because of the new regulation as they imposed on it. For example, I have to have the fire sprinklers. Nobody, none of the homes that built, I mean, like three years ago and before, they don't have it. Therefore, I mean, this is going to be the safest as far as the fire department. As far as the truck for the trash and post office and so on, no matter what, I build it or not, they're going to do it anyhow. I mean, this is not going to increase to the traffic or nothing. And as far as the, my neighbor 1225, he has one car garage, obviously. He has a potential, he can actually make it two-car garage. He chose it not to do. On the 1235, Dr. James, he's talking about 70% the slope. His home is on the same slope as I have it. There is, I'm not increasing the slope of the lot. And also, he's right. I approached him to buy his property because he has a lot, I mean, his lot is like 2,400, and he has almost 3,000 square feet on it. He owns another lot below facing Corona. I approached him to buy it. He agreed, and I approached the city staff at that time. They said I cannot buy it for two reasons. One of them, buying that property is going to make his home nonconforming more than as it was before. It means the total lots that he has right now, it's about like 4,400 square feet. If I buy 2,100, 2,200 square feet, it makes it worse than as it was before. That's the first reason. And second, even I buy it, it doesn't, I mean, it makes the, it's not going to conform with the neighborhood because the lot is going to be like an L shape. Therefore, we stopped at that time, and obviously, that was the hardship that, I mean, as I said, there is no any other lot available for me to add to the property. And I have two car garage that most of the homes on the same neighborhood, they don't have it. They have only one car garage, and as she said, they are abusing it. I mean, it's not my problem. It's an enforcement issue, not my problem. And these two garages, they are not accessible. There is no accessible, I mean, to the, I mean, they cannot make a bedroom or whatever, but you never know. There are a lot of illegal activity in those homes. You cannot deny the entire homes inside, I mean, on Vista...
Please have quiet.
Vista Superba, because, I mean, one owner decided to have an illegal activity. Yeah, this is an enforcement issue.
Are you just about done, Mr. Hamadi?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Hang on a second. Do we have any questions for Mr. Hamadi?
Yeah. How do you, garage lift work? Is it...
It's not a lift. No, it's not a lift. It's, it was a lift before, then because we changed, I mean, the city staff, they told me that, as in his report says, the front setback originally was, they told me 15 feet. They said, it's not. It's only five feet. Therefore, I gained that 10 feet plus two feet from the building. Therefore, if you look at the plan, I have a two-car accessible garage. It's a two-single car garage, one directly going from the street, the other one is going to turn, as you see it. There is no lift anymore. Yeah. On the bottom floor, yes.
Any questions for Mr. Hamadi? Please have your seat. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. So, we're not going to, we cannot close the public hearing because we still have Mr. Kiesel, if you have any questions, or do we close the public hearing?
You can close the public hearing for deliberations, and you can always ask for clarification if you have a question.
Well, we haven't asked him, we haven't given him a hard time yet, so... Any questions for Mr. Kiesel? I don't want to close the public hearing yet because I maybe want to have to bring anyone, somebody back.
I just have a general, I guess, question, comment about some of the complaints that I'm hearing, you know, hearing notices and coming here twice, going back. So, what was the miscue here? So, one gentleman complained that he came here twice, and then the other people did not hear, or some other lady said that she did not know the hearing was...
Well, we can certainly check who was noticed. I mean, we have records.
But we did that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I believe the first, the first continuance, the newspaper forgot to put the notice in the paper. The city did what we typically do to send the notice to the paper. I believe it was the paper's doing.
Okay.
I think that was the first comment that, you know, unfortunately, we had to cancel the meeting.
Yeah, we went to that extent, or because it was not...
It wasn't properly noticed in the paper.
That's why we extended the hearing. But somehow, I guess it's not, I mean, the staff has done what you've done, you know, supposed to, then I guess that's fine.
If I may add to that, it is true that the LA Times notified us that they just failed to run the ad. We did submit it properly. When items are continued to a date certain, we don't send out, we don't mail out new notices to people. There was one point where we did hand-deliver, not to the whole 500-foot radius, I'll admit that, but I did walk myself notices up and down Vista Superba Street. There was only one property that I couldn't give a notice to. That's because they had a big sign saying no trespassing, so I just didn't do it.
Any other questions for the staff?
Yeah. Rationale for this...
The light, the light was off.
To be honest with you, I don't know why that number was picked. I believe it was increased from about 5,000 to 5,500.
So there was another minimum before?
I believe it was smaller before, it was a smaller lot size before, and they increased it in 1992. And I'm not sure the genesis of why it was increased.
So as far as the, you mentioned some other lots that have been approved since then, that were under the 7,500?
Correct.
And a few were in Adams Hill?
Four of the 18 were in the Adams Hill area.
None on this street?
I don't believe so. I'd have to check.
But the four others, how far below do they fall, under the 7,500?
Give me a few minutes, I think I have that information.
Okay. And can you give a, just a general context? I know you explained a little bit of when this area was kind of built in the 20s, or subdivided, but was it, was it subdivided and just sold as different plots? As small, single plot, like, just minimum about 4,000, 5,000 square-foot lots, and they were just sold for different people to develop on them? Is that how it was done?
Well, this track, which doesn't encompass all of Adams Hill by any extent, was subdivided, I believe, in 1926. I don't know how, how the rest of Adams Hill was subdivided and eventually purchased by various property owners. Most of the lots are, and I can get that information here, I can tell you the average lot size in the, basically the neighborhood just surrounding the subject site in Glendale. I've done that analysis on the hillsides.
It's average?
Let me, let me look that up.
But what you are going to be quoting is not for Adams Hills, it's for every, every, or is it Adams Hills?
Well, it's not even all of Adams Hill. It is a portion of Adams Hill that basically, let me.
So Kiesel, in your, in your report, you have an average lot size provided to us.
Right.
So I mean, how different, how different is it going to be from what there is in your report?
Well, what I did with another analysis is took sort of an expanded neighborhood, and let me just put the map up that I did. This, I believe, is the track, and I took, there are 94 lots in this area, the shaded portion, portion, I don't know if you can see that. There are 94 lots. Basically, I divided it here because this is the steeper portion of this track, it gets less steep over here. So to me, that was a natural dividing line. So there were 94 lots in this area. The average, the average lot size of those 94 lots is 3,900 and 89 square feet, and the average house size is just over 1,800 square feet. Oh, and the track was subdivided in 1924, I was wrong.
So, so one side of the street is Glendale, the other is LA?
Correct.
Sort of.
The one side of Vista Superba is Glendale, one side is Los Angeles.
Very interesting street.
Any other questions for Mr. Kiesel? Go ahead.
And actually, let me get back to the variances. There were no other variances on Vista Superba since 2000.
But there were variances for the neighborhood, for lots, variance to build on a lot smaller than 7,500?
Right. The most recent one was in, was in 2011 on Wellesley, and that lot was 3,550.
Is that, what was the, what was the slope on that?
I don't, I don't have that information. And then previous to that, there was a variance in 2003 on Corona.
That's the street right below.
Correct. I don't know, actually, yeah, it looks like it was right on the block, right, right below the subject site.
And what was it a variance for?
At least lot size. It was a larger lot, though, 7,100 square feet. Let's see if there was any.
Wait, I'm sorry.
And it was also, the site consisted of two, two legal lots.
The lot before, the first one you mentioned, what was the square footage?
The Wellesley?
Yeah.
3,550 square feet.
Mrs. Landrigan?
Miss.
Miss Landrigan, sorry.
My mother's passed, thank you.
God bless her soul.
Yes, God bless her. Tell me, did the ordinance actually remove the slope requirement? I mean, the seven, over 50%? Why, why is that not part of a variance? The, I know that.
Not part of the conditional use permit anymore?
What does the ordinance 5819 do to the hillside ordinance and the slope requirement?
They no longer require conditional use permit approval if it's above 50% lot slope, or, or minimum width, or grading.
So there's no restrictions on slopes?
Correct.
In building?
Correct. However, that is now the lot slope, and the grading are now in the purview of the design review board. So the analysis of slope and grading are reviewed by DRB.
It was never the case that it was illegal to build, or that you needed a variance to build if a lot was too steep. It just required a conditional use permit, just to ensure that the, any impacts from those could be mitigated. But it was never against the regulations. It's a very, it's a very common misunderstanding, and it's one of the reasons why in the set of ordinances, which this commission reviewed last summer, that we transfer that to be part of the design review, because all of the questions that arose from that about site planning really could be just as well addressed in a holistic fashion with the building design.
So Ms. Landrigan never said it was an illegal thing. She's asking why?
It was not a limit. I mean, it was not something for which you needed a variance.
So in other words, would you tell me that CUP is taken by this ordinance, and because now it's being handled by the design review board?
Right.
Any other questions?
Yes, so the average slope calculation thing is out, too?
As Mr. Kiesel said, those lots that had characteristics which previously required a CUP, those same characteristics are still taken into consideration. They require extra review and the possibility of extra conditioning by the design review board instead of doing it through a CUP.
All right, and my second question is, when you do, is this lot legally tied? Is that what I understand, together with the other one?
It will be once the house is constructed over the lot line.
Because I, I actually heard, and I concur, that how can you call it a lot if there are two different lots, and call it 4,200 when one lot is 2,100 and the other is 2,100 and they're not tied? How can you say that? Because to me, that's very, that's misrepresenting a legal's.
Right, I should have probably said a site, then, because it's a subject site. Once, once the.
If it's approved, it would be able to do that.
Right.
So if that's a future potential, how can you use it as part of your calculation?
Well, once the site, once the house is developed over the property line, it ties them together.
They could tie it together.
Well, no, it, once the house is constructed over the property line, it is tied together.
There'll be a requirement that they tie it to get their building permit.
But in reality, what you should say, as far as I'm concerned, is that it's a house being built on a 2,100-square-foot lot.
Well, I suppose.
Or two 2,100-square-foot lots, which actually, to me, is totally different than what it stated in the staff report. I mean, I don't know. They're legally not tied yet.
Correct, they are not.
I would just say that that's pretty typical on our hillsides. We do have homes, once, that's part of the reason when you see homes, they are built over the property line in hillside areas. We tie by use. So once the house, we require at least three feet over the line, and then we will, when they actually come in for a building permit, require them to covenant them, and to create one building site, one lot for purposes of building permit. So, but you're right, if the building ever went away, you would have two separate lots, or in some cases, more than two.
So how can you do a calculation, FAR, et cetera, et cetera, based upon two separate lots?
They base it on the building site, and they take a look at the building plans and make sure that they're building over the line.
And is that, that's common practice, or is that practice in Glendale? And where is that stationed, and why is that?
That's our practice in Glendale, and it has been our practice. We do allow them to covenant, to record a covenant agreement to hold as one, a building site. So you can have multiple lots that we hold as one, as a building site. And then we tie it by use, by making them build over the property line. One of the questions that came up from one of the speakers, he said, well, I was told that if I buy a lot and put a garage on it, I couldn't do that. Well, the reason they were told they couldn't do that is because they wouldn't be building over the line.
It doesn't cross the property line.
Exactly. And then you would have a primary use on a lot that didn't meet the code. So that's the reason why somebody was told they couldn't do that.
Thank you.
And the project description does state that there are two APNs and two lots. I'd like to go to two, unless you have any other questions. I have two late arrivals on Vista Superba, and we haven't closed it, but these are the only two cars that I'll be taking. One is Susan Roberts. Ms. Roberts?
Sorry for my lateness, I was working. I just want to ask that you uphold the planning hearing commissioner, planning hearing officers' disapproval of these variances, because this is directly opposed to our hillside ordinance, and even the downtown specific. Now, I just want to remind you that the burden of proof is on the applicant to meet each and every of the four findings. In the first finding, the intent is to, the, the general intent of ordinances such as the hillside ordinance and the downtown specific plan is to stop the overdevelopment in our already-built-out, single-family residential zones, or on undersized and very steep lots. So really, you have to look at the hillside ordinance to address the slope and the lot size. And if you're just passing that down to the design review board, that is kind of troubling to me. Also, the, he's stating that, you know, it's a big hardship because he's not allowed to build on these two lots, but the hardship cannot be of the applicant's own making. And due diligence would, when he bought these lots, have alerted him to the idea that he cannot build on such a steep slope and an undersized lot. And finding B, the other properties in the same neighborhood are also under the hillside ordinance zoning regulations. You know, if, what is happening with our hillside ordinance, is that just being swept under the rug? Because the hillside ordinance was a compromise. You know, you ask why it was only 750, or why it was so, so large. That was a compromise. These, the smaller lots, especially in Adams Square, were all developed in the early 20s. And the ordinance went in in 93, 92? And that's what we should be going by now, not what, what happened in the 20s. We put in the hillside ordinance strictly to reduce these usages. Also, the granting of the variance will be detrimental to the public welfare or interest to property or improvements in such a zone and neighborhood. Allowing the development of hillside lots of less than 750 square feet with an average slope of more than 50% will set a precedent and open the floodgates to overdevelopment in the hillsides of Glendale. And this is something that really bothers me. If, you know, some, in the past, they slipped through with under 300, a little over 300, that's something that should be stopped. We want to be diligent and not let the hillside ordinance be continually eroded away. The granting of the variance is contrary to the objective of the ordinance. Hillside ordinance prohibits a building of lots on less than 75 square feet and a slope of more than 50. Also, it's the, the parking, even though he's, he's saying that he's going to build two small garages now, we all know that those garages are going to be filled with the overflow of our houses. It's very unlikely that he will park in either one of them. I just urge you to deny the variance and the conditional use in conformance with the hillside ordinance and our downtown specific plan, which promised us that they wouldn't overdevelop our hillsides. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker and the last speaker is Gary Harthorn.
Pretty close. Yep. Thanks. Harthorn, Gary Harthorn.
Harthorn?
Yeah.
I saw the H after S, and that's a shh.
No, it's an, it's a, well, hearts, separate word, horn, separate word.
Okay.
Put them together.
So now it makes sense. Thank you, sir. Makes sense, please, go ahead.
I appreciate Ms. Landrigan's logical progression thought process. That's good. First things first, I think that should be, that lots should be joined if, in fact, they want to call it a 4,100 square foot. That's good. My main concern with the development of that particular parcel, or any parcel on that street now, is that there is no parking, period. I mean, that really is the main concern. I mean, it's only 18 feet wide, that street, which is substandard to begin with. Secondly, Los Angeles, in their infinite wisdom, decided to allow only parking on someone else's side, not Glendale, not theirs, but only Glendale. So the Glendale side gets really impacted, okay? Earlier, we had this lift proposal, which was optimistic at best, but there's a couple of things you've got to do. You've got to look at the situation in real terms. I suggested that Mr. Kiesel come out on a Sunday, when people are home, right? Or even on a holiday, when, you know, Thanksgiving, come back, that's good. Anyway, because everybody is parking everywhere they can. And when Mrs. Estrada mentioned that they parked in their driveway, well, accurate, yes, but not really clear. They park across the apron of their driveway as well, most often. That's the convenient place. It now becomes street parking. Okay, well, if you live further up the street, and you want to get by, and someone's coming up the other way, there has to be a place for one car to allow the other car to go by, which means there has to be somewhere he can pull. But with cars parked across aprons, there is no place. So it becomes a real Donnybrook. Now, he's saying, okay, well, I got two parking places now, covered, blah, blah, blah. But I could have turned around and talked to him behind me here, and, you know, we could have worked something out, but that would have disrupted the meeting, and I won't want to do it. So now I need it, I need more clarification, I need more. So, now I need it, I, I need more clarification. I need more information. He says, "One is straight in, and the other one is kind of sideways, perpendicular perhaps?" How does that work?
Mr. Kiesel?
Thank you. One is perpendicular to the street, one is parallel to the street.
Oh, well, now, here we go again. Now, we have a subject of not likely to be used, like the lift concept, not likely to be used. But if you're going to use it, in order to gain access to that second car, which is now perpendicular, and I'm, I'm, I mean, parallel, thank you.
They're two, they're two separate garages.
But is access achieved direct in?
Sir, you need to address us, tell your concern, and then after you, we'll have them respond back to you.
Okay, yeah, whatever. Sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Whatever. I'm, I'm looking for some clarification on how those cars are parked, and if, in fact, in practicality, it's going to be ease of use so that one car doesn't have to exit, stay on the street, blocking traffic while the other car is accessed. Because parking is a major problem on that street. And I, I don't know how to emphasize that. It is a major, major problem. Now, I even suggested, at one point, that the walkway, that public walkway, that access, that, that deeded whatever, be abandoned, because it's senseless. There is no reason for it. And if it was abandoned, by the way, the only way to get up and down there is you've got to be a billy goat. There's no way of getting up and down there. So, if it's abandoned, then, then that setback on that side can be minimized to where maybe the house can be wider enough to get two direct parked cars in there? So, I think there's some work to be done. But with what I'm, you know, questions I'm coming up with as I listen to this input, there definitely is, I think, room for improvement here. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. With, with that, no, sir. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to have Mr. Kiesel.
Excuse me. The applicant still has a right of rebuttal because we took additional testimony.
With the additional two?
Yes.
Mr. Mattie?
The time?
Please, yeah, please, please make sure that we get the time right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't have that much, actually, to say. These are two legal lots. Therefore, I mean, if, for example, if I could have built two homes, the reason we are asking for one home because it's a variance for the 7,500 square feet. And I'm assuming the reason for the 75 square feet, 100 square feet, was to put these lots together and make it, I mean, less density, as it is right now. And just for the concern, I know Dr. James is unhappy that he showed up and nobody was here. Roger knows. I came actually from San Francisco. I was there seeing my kids. I drove. By the time I was close to get here, I called, and he said he's canceled. I should be more upset, but I'm not. And as, as far as the average lot on this street, it's 3,400 square feet, and mine is going to be 4,200 or 4,300. And again, this is the only lot on this street. And as you may know, every lot is different from, from one street to other city. It doesn't create any precedent for other, I mean, part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing now, Ms. Dodler. Mr. Kiesel, let me ask you the question with the last speaker about the parking, this funky thing about perpendicular, parallel, and what have you.
It might just be easier if I go up to the site plan and show. Okay. It's probably easiest, yeah, it's probably easiest to see on the first floor floor plan. Here is the site. The first garage is right here, and this was the location of the, the garage in the, in the previous plans. The new garage is proposed in this area here. So, this garage is, I would say, parallel to Vista Superba. This garage is perpendicular. So, if a car is parked here, you can access and remove the car in this parking garage, in this garage. Use of one garage doesn't prevent or prohibit access of any car on the other garage. Is that, does that clarify?
Not clear.
And let me just, the driveway is right here.
Very good. So, public hearing is closed. If you have any questions from Mr. Kiesel, you may. And if not, we should start deliberating. Would like to go, sir, sir, we're done, we're done with the public comments, sir. Thank you. We, that's good. Those are questions that allow, allow some time, and we will see, we'll make sure the process is done properly as we go forward. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I, I would have a hard time approving this variance. I'm a big fan of the Adams Hill neighborhood. I find a lot of the homes very interesting there. And yes, they are in small lots. But in the early '90s, when we came up with this ordinance, I think we came to our good senses that we put a minimum to our lot size and what should be developed in the hillsides. And, and then we have the variance process that, you know, if there's an exceptional case, we can, we can have a variance for it. So, when I, when I drive up this street, or up in the hill and, and go on to this street, you don't have to be a traffic engineer or an expert in, in these things to figure out that there's an overcapacity issue in this neighborhood. And, and there are few lots that are still undeveloped. And even with those undeveloped lots, this street is, is handling car traffic very poorly. It's the narrowest street I've ever been on in Glendale. And, and I understand the, and I, and I believe the whole, the garages, you know, a lot of the garages are used for other things. But, but I know also Adams Hill residents are very proactive about that because they, they hold a garage sale for just that reason every, every year. And I think a lot of homes are, participate in that so they can sell stuff from the garages and then have cars move in. But the only place that the garage sale doesn't happen is on this street. And, and I've been told it's, it's, it's not, doesn't happen on the street because it's so narrow. Having people go in and out of that is just, is just too hard. And when I went on, when I went there today, I, I had a lot of difficulty just making a U-turn. So, I don't see any exceptional reason to have to give a variance for this lot, given the circumstances of the neighborhood today. It's not complying with the code. And, and, you know, I think, I think the property owner has done the best he can to, to make a, a design that looks great for a hillside. Unfortunately, I don't think it can comply, it can go with this neighborhood given the circumstances it has. So, I, I would be concerned if we did approve this, how it would affect the other vacant properties also on that street and, and nearby. So, I, I would, I would, I would not go ahead with, with the approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Yossian. Anybody else?
Property owners obviously have a right to develop as owner of that property. And I'm usually on the side of the developers developing the property, whether it's a purpose of a residence or whatever. But where I'm having a problem is that this is 77% slope hill. And I don't know if anything can be really built on the 77% slope hill. And this case is before us, you know, asking for variance because it doesn't meet the code. And a lot of the houses that was on the, in the neighborhood were built prior, in the, in the early '20s. And as Commissioner Yossian said, you know, we put in this guideline ordinance to control the hillside ordinances development. I am not going to elaborate too much, but, you know, I, I feel very uncomfortable approving this development.
Thank you, Commissioner Chang. Ms. Landrigan?
Thank you. Realizing. My reading of the code clearly states that a hardship is one that is not as stated in here. I agree with the planning hearing officer's determination that this is a self-imposed hardship. The applicant knew the restrictions of the property when they purchased it. And, and so therefore, went in all-knowing. And asking for the variance does not, actually, the premise of the applicant's appeal is that it's in violation of the Subdivision Map Act. And since a variance is a requirement for any development that is extraordinary, and a hardship must be proven, it was not. It existed ahead of time. So, certainly, just based upon that, I would concur with the planning hearing officer's determination that this does not meet one of the four requirements to grant a variance. I believe the parking issues really are paramount. Unfortunately, the rest of the application is in conformance with the code. And so, as, and I live on a hillside very similar to Superba, but not as bad, thank God. But I must tell you, I know how hard it is to have parking only on one side. And I live on an uphill side. And, and when there's an event, it's, it's difficult even to park in front of your house, or even to get to your parking space. It's not something we consider. I think it's something we should look at in the future as to the impact. We no longer have just two cars in any family. That's just the reality of modern living. The other issue is, I really feel that the statement that was at the very beginning of the staff report indicated that the variance as proposed was the only one of the CUP that was to be considered by the planning commission. And I don't think it was ever clearly stated that the lift was removed in here. So, I think that might, you might want to correct that. And, and secondly, it does say the lot size and frontage that the subject property is approximately 4,340 square feet and, and has 55 feet of frontage on both Vista Superba and Corona. So, to me, I think it needs to state that subject property is 2,100 off of Superba and 2,100 off of Corona. When built, it would be. And I think it needs to clearly state that is part of how this is addressed. Because they're two legal properties separated right now. They're not one property. I also think that, not that I'm an app developer, but maybe Dr. James is. There should be an app that would be really nice to have, and I have to agree. You can fly anywhere, and if your plane is delayed, you can bitch and moan because it tells you on your telephone. It would be very nice if you could sign in and say that you were interested in following what's happening on a site. And if a cancellation occurred, you could ask for a text message, and that could happen. And I think that the city should look into it because we do have occurrences like that, and it would make it a lot easier. The dilemma is, to me, that a lot of people do not know they're coming until the last minute, so it would be difficult to notify you. So, it would require, you know, a bit of attention on the neighbors to put their names in. But I, I do think that it's, it's difficult when the meetings are canceled. And, and as a commissioner, I apologize for the inconvenience that you all had. So, please accept my apology. But I just do want to reiterate that I, I do not think it meets at least one of the four requirements. And so therefore, in all good faith, I, I cannot support overturning the planning hearing officer's determination.
Thank you, Ms. Landrigan. I, my point of view on it was exactly the hardship. Self-imposed hardship is something that cannot be, cannot be included in our decision-making. If you've done it, you knowingly you've done it, I tend to believe that I cannot support just because of the self-imposed hardship part of it. Parking is not an issue, not in the neighborhood, as far as the, the property and/or the development was concerned, because they're meeting code as far as the parking is concerned. And I didn't have, well, the number four, I may find some fault with it if I was being overly zealous, but it doesn't matter because if, if I can't find one of them, the variance will not be granted as far as this commission is concerned. And we apologize if the process, at some point, something has happened that you didn't get notified or what have you. That's not the intention of this city. It's not the intention of this department. Having said that, I'm just about done. So, I think we need to take a motion. Do we have one prepared for us?
There should be one in your packet.
Who wants to read the motion?
I'd have to find it on here. I will read it. I move that, upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to variance case number PVAR 1238084, located at 1229 Vista Superba Street. And after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter, that the planning commission hereby deny the planning, upholds the hearing planners, let me try that again.
Upholds?
Upholds the planning hearing officer's decision denying said variance case number PVAR 1238084 in accord with the findings set forth in the December 2nd, 2013 decision letter.
Ms. one, the issue?
Planning Commissioners, Landrigan?
We need a second.
Second.
Planning Commissioners, Landrigan?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yossian?
Aye.
Chairperson Protem Astorian?
Aye.
All right. So, I'd like to be able to take a three-minute break, if you wouldn't mind.
It has, it's been adequate, it is adequately served by utilities. It will be appropriately landscaped and it will not create substantial traffic on Chevy Chase Drive. The project was also found consistent with the guidelines for hillside development in that it was found to be compatible with the neighborhood in terms of size, bulk, mass, roofline orientation. It preserves the prominent natural features, native vegetation and open space in a manner compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The site plan accounts for potential visual impacts and the architectural style and design elements are compatible with the neighborhood. In the appeal, I'm only going to summarize what the appellant's have said. The detail is in my staff report. In the appeal, the appellant's contend there was insufficient or inadequate evidence regarding how the size of the house and retaining walls will affect the aesthetics of the neighborhood. The applicants also raised objections about the findings made by the hearing officer. One group of objections relate to landslide and flooding hazards. As stated in the original staff report and at the hearing, the applicant provided a soils report and a geotechnical survey that demonstrate that the site is not subject to undue landslide risk and that the construction of a single-family home is feasible as long as the improvements follow the recommendations of the studies. Concerns raised by the neighbors about flooding hazards were addressed by the city engineer's office at the hearing. It was determined based on the hydrologic analysis submitted by the applicant and reviewed by the city engineer that the storm water runoff will not significantly increase as a result of this project or present hazards to the neighboring properties. The second group of objections raised by the appellant's is in regards to the compatibility of the house with existing development, in particular, the size and visibility of the house, the size and visibility of the retaining walls, and the location of the house on the site. As the data demonstrates, the project, while larger than other homes nearby in square feet, is significantly smaller as a ratio to the total lot area. The proposed house does not come close to maximizing its allowed floor area. It is also not the only house visible above the street on Chevy Chase Drive. There are others nearby that are similarly situated up the hillside. The two retaining walls behind the house and the one behind the guesthouse are proposed to be a maximum of five feet tall. The ones behind the house could be a maximum of 15 feet tall. The tops of the wall behind the guesthouse and the lower wall behind the main house are lower than the tops of the roofs of the adjacent structures, so they shouldn't, they will not be visible from the property directly below the project and may not be visible from the properties on either side of the site. All the walls may be visible from properties higher, at higher elevations across the canyon on Cascadia. None of the walls come close, again, to the 15-foot height limit allowed by code for retaining walls behind homes. The retaining walls enclose relatively modest rear yards, and generally, the rear yards that are proposed are not much larger than what is essentially required by the building and safety department for protection against hillside failure, hillside slope failure. The rear yard behind the house could be reduced some by the elimination of the proposed swimming pool. The applicant selected the building site in part because it is one of, if not the flattest part of the property. There's a small natural swale which you can see in the topography that widens and becomes more shallow precisely where the house is proposed. And I'm talking about this area right here. You can see how it turns back in, and that's right where the house is being proposed to be located. The appellant's have suggested the house should be closer to Chevy Chase or Laird. Those locations would make the house more visible from the street and from neighboring properties, in staff's opinion. In addition to being one of the flattest parts of the site, the proposed location is behind the oak trees that will remain down slope from the access driveway. These oak trees help screen the structures from view. In the judgment of staff, the amount of grading proposed is modest compared to the size and steepness of the lot and compared to other hillside development proposals that we've seen. It must be acknowledged that the total amount of grading would be larger if the graded driveway were taken into account in the total grading for the site. However, since this access road already exists and has been graded sometime in the past, it is reasonable that the new development should use that path. Any other path would require even more grading. The shape of the house follows the contours of the slope as recommended by the hillside design guidelines. The house is sized to fit the location and is not the maximum allowable size. The size, height, and extent of the retaining walls are modest and less than allowed by code. Most of the property will be landscaped with drought-tolerant plants, and the upper slopes will be left in their natural condition, as recommended by the landscape guidelines for hillside development. A series of comments have been received from a neighbor and have been distributed to the commission. There's three from one of the neighbors. Two of them, one of them is a memo, one's essentially a letter, and one's a sort of a slideshow. I've reviewed those comments and can respond to them if requested. I will note that one of the comments is that the guesthouse is too tall to meet code. Staff, I looked at the plans carefully, and I agree. We missed this in our earlier reviews. The guesthouse is too tall, and if the applicant wants to pursue this guesthouse, he will either need to apply for a variance, or he'll need to make it smaller, or he may have to eliminate it entirely. I have apprised the applicant of this problem. Based on staff's review of the project and the appellant's arguments, it's recommended that the planning commission sustain the planning hearing officer's decision to approve the conditional use permit, and a motion for the commission's consideration is attached. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hamilton?
Where is the oak tree that's supposed to be removed? I'm not aware, and the applicant can confirm this, I'm not aware that there are any oak trees that are proposed to be removed.
It said there was one in the report.
It might be, well, then it would be, if I could have the point, where's the point here? It must be, it must be this one here, I think, which would be in, it's essentially in the roadway.
It's in the middle?
It's on the edge of the roadway access out to Chevy Chase Drive. But it's within the proposed roadway.
It's not in the middle, Mr. Hamilton.
It's not in the middle.
I was there today, it was not in the middle, there's nothing in the middle, other than some sandbags.
It looks like it's on the edge of this roadway.
Yeah, and I walked on that, too, and it didn't seem like there was any oak tree. So, the oak tree has to be removed to the driveway?
It also could be this one, this might, I can't tell this far away, there's a tree, I think, a trunk here, and this one might also be impacted by the retaining wall that will be necessary on this side of the driveway, because they're going to be cutting into the hill here to put the driveway throughout to Chevy Chase. So this one might be down here. And see, and not all these may be of a protected size. I'd have to go back and look at the staff report to be certain.
They're all protected.
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Hamilton.
As I'm looking at this slope, you have a natural runoff of the water, and I'm trying to look for the, I guess, the water, how it's going to be diverted.
They've got a series of V ditches up above the retaining walls that'll intercept the water coming down this way and divert it out to the driveway. All the runoff that falls on the property or on the house will be directed down the driveway or by, probably by cast iron pipe out to the driveway. That's the typical way that it's handled.
Any other questions for Mr. Hamilton? I do have a question. Do you know why Laird was not considered as a driveway?
I'm not sure I understand why it wasn't, it's being partially used as driveway access.
No, but your major exit and ingress is going to be off of Chevy Chase when it's built, or is Laird also going to be used?
Both are going to be used. It's a through path connecting from Chevy Chase over here to Laird. Where it connects here to Laird, it'll have to be, it'll connect to the existing improvements that are on Laird. If I had to guess, my guess would be most of the traffic will come in and off of Laird. Even with this availability, it'll still be easier and quieter to get in and off of Laird than it would be to come out onto Chevy Chase.
Other questions? So, what I'd like to do is to go to the appellant first, and there is two of you, Ms. Virginia Moreno and Darren Rohan.
Darren, go first, is that okay?
Yes, and between the two of you, you have 15 minutes, so you may, the time allocation is up to you folks.
Okay. Just make sure that I'm-- This guy's picture is going to really help as he's explaining it, because we have seen comments on it, you can really tell from the pictures that we made copies of all of his hair, what's happening. So, we would really appreciate it if you follow along. Thank you so much.
Not applicants?
There are the appellant's. The applicant will follow them later.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir. Introduce yourself and--
Good afternoon. My name is Darren Rohan. I live at 2500 East Chevy Chase on the east corner of Chevy Chase and Laird. The project in question is proposed to build directly above my house. My first concern is the total loss of my privacy. Since the house will be two stories and stand high on the hill, there will be a clear view directly into my backyard and pool area plus, all the rooms, bedrooms on the back of the house will be exposed. If you could please see page number one. A bad history has developed with the owner of this property regarding his willful disregard for city building codes. Just in the last one to two months, he has constructed an illegal fence at the end of Laird Street, just at the entrance of the meadow. I have included a copy of the code violation in my notes to you. Code enforcement has since made him remove it. Page number two. We are not sure a professional survey has been done to determine the boundaries of this property and that of all the neighbors. The boundaries seems to be arbitrarily decided by Mr. Monroe. He marks them by hammering in a stick and painting it red. He has dug ditches and planted a row of trees that visually seems to encroach on the property at 2418 East Chevy Chase, the other neighbor on the west side of the meadow. We have no way of knowing since there are no markers that delineate his property lines. The owner has taken a beautiful meadow and with no regard to wildlife vegetation or the environmental values of the area, brought in a bulldozer on the weekend, when, of course, the city was closed, and proceeded to grade the meadow flat, flat, and remove most of the vegetation. The road, as claimed by the applicant, was never a road. It was a path more like a fire break. Mr. Monroe created a road up the hill of the meadow to his project by grading. The road was constructed by the removal and exportation of substantial dirt. Wildlife vegetation has been endangered, and many trees were destroyed as the result of his operations and hillside clearing. Please see pictures three, four, and five. He also graded in his driveway on the 2512 address side of Chevy Chase to the street. This driveway, which he is claiming is his main entrance to the house, is so steep you can hardly walk it. See page number six, please. There are historic aerial views of this area, which clearly shows no road or backway as Mr. Monroe claims. The amount of grading used to create the road should be included in the amount of grading required to build the house and in his application. See copies of code violation, please. Mr. Monroe has created a driveway of deep fill that abats and impinges upon a major flood drainage path. All has been done without rudimentary engineering or city approval. There has been flooding and erosion caused by his doings, which has never been addressed. Now, the situation at Laird Street is that even with the smallest amount of rain, we have a great deal of mud runoff, even with just a light sprinkle. Mr. Monroe has became aware of this, so, to his credit, he has put sandbags all over, but it does not help. When we get heavy rain, the whole area is going to become a sea of mud. I'm also concerned about my pool area since, from above, much of this flow may go directly into my pools. See page seven and eight. Picture on page eight show the location and the footprint, all located above my house, and the potential for flooding is great. Further, the owner has begun an extensive hutchbudge of landscaping even before basic project approval. The extensive unapproved landscaping, planted, unapproved grading may present serious wildfire threats to the area because the trees planted appear to be non-indigenous cedars and may not meet structure parameters, fire safety standards. See page number nine. When you view all this history together, you can paint a picture of someone who has little regard for following the prescribed method of doing things. It has also just came to our attention that there may be a real problem with the applicant's design documents. They seem to be filled with misrepresentation and inaccurate data. These are issues that Mr. Babag Nasimpour, architect, will address in his presentation. So, the question stands, how many more willful code violations will the city be required to enforce in dealing with the developers at 2512 Chevy Chase Drive? Nothing about this project meets the requirement of the Glendale Municipal Code 311040 Hillside Development Review Policy. The house is large, plus it has a guesthouse and three car garages plus a pool. It is certainly not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, all perched on a hill, highly visible to the whole surrounding area. The entire site has been denuded of the natural vegetation. It certainly does not match the neighborhood in terms of size, scale, bulk mass, roofline orientation setbacks, and site layout. Also, the architectural style and architectural elements are not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In closing, I would like to say that I am in no way against a house being built at 2512 Chevy Chase Drive, but the house should be placed at street level and kept in keeping with the aesthetic look of the neighborhood. If this would be the case, I would welcome Mr. Monroe as a new neighbor. See page 10 for that entrance at 2512.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are you following, Smurna? Stotler, how much more time does she have? It'll just buzz, right? We tend to startle people.
I understand, I understand. Just in case I don't get all into it, this gives you something to read, okay? Okay? My name is Virginia Moreno, and I live right on this side of Laird, so myself and my neighbor are going to be the ones that are the most impacted, okay? And when I listen to a lot of these conclusions, I mean, I live there, I just can't even believe these. First of all, I'm asking that the conditional use permit be overturned and that the developer be required to address the serious concerns the neighbors have with this project. As a neighbor of the property in question, I wish to make it clear, it's not the having the house built, we don't really care, we just think it's going to really be in the wrong place, and it's going to create tremendous problems for us. We would like it placed down where it's supposed to be placed, and we don't believe that in all good conscience, all the four findings required in order to grant a permit exist. It says that the proposed use will be consistent with the various elements and objectives of the general plan, which includes a thorough review of the project. The code also specifically requires that projects adhere to the hillside design, and it says that they must relate the business to existing, the buildings to existing context by avoiding the appearance of monumental structures, and that it should conform to the neighborhood. This project is going to sit way up on the hill. It's not a little bigger, it's a lot bigger than all of the surrounding neighborhoods. It has a guesthouse, which is really unusual and really tall, and all of these elements are really distinctly clear. The oak trees don't hide anything, and all the people on the other side, it's incredibly visual. It just gets almost like a blithe in the area, and it doesn't match any of the architecture. It also says that the code requires that the development should be compatible with surrounding neighborhoods in terms of size, scale, bulk, mass, roofline orientation, and setbacks. These are all violated by this project. All you have to do is go up there and walk it and look at it. The second finding is that it will not be detrimental to our safety. I have lived there since 1998. In 05, we had a flood, which I could not believe. There was no metal left, it totally washed away. My car was washed into Chevy Chase. We had tree trunks this big. You guys were out with caterpillars, and they're saying that this is not going to impact the flood. Are you kidding me? We just had, and I wasn't even going to talk about it, but I'm going to talk about it. I was there with the city inspector, Julio Acosta, just came, he's a grading specialist for the city, and I just happened to be outside when he came to look. So I talked to him after he took his pictures and he investigated, and he was shocked. He said, "The amount of grading, I can't believe, it's totally illegal." He said, "As soon as you have a rain," he said, "the mud flows are going to start like crazy." So he said, "It's not, I don't know if it's official yet or not, I don't know if he served it or not," but he said he was going to make them take drastic action for erosion control because it's graded almost flat, it's all dirt. If you look at the pictures that Darren just gave you, the slightest rain and the whole street is mud. I mean, I can't imagine with the history of what's happening with the flooding. When it flooded, your engineers told us, nobody can build this house without taking care of all this drainage, and then also by putting in a turnaround because people pull in, there's no way to turn around, and they all have to back out into Chevy Chase, which is busy. So it's really a hazard, but none of this has been addressed, you know, like, it's not on his property. The drain, the hillside drain, which is one of the main drains in the canyon, literally misses his property for about four inches, and then it all sweeps across his property. It's going to affect all of us with the amount of flooding that's going to come, so I'm just shocked that something like this would even be an issue. I've totally gone off record. The only thing I want to say is I'm not going to, I'm just going to say that it's big, it's huge, it's going to be ugly. He's graded all this illegal stuff, he's done illegal stuff, totally violated constantly, okay? It totally doesn't match, totally does not surround, so I don't have any idea what's going on, but we are just in shock. There's no vegetation left, there's no animals left, oh, and the landscaping. He's put rows and rows of Italian cedars, which we were told are firebombs, so when there were a fire, they all burst into flames, all unapproved. So, I blew my talk, but I just, I feel very strongly because I live there, and like I said, I will welcome his as a neighbor. I'm not trying to be contentious. I just want to feel like we're going to be safe and that it fits into the neighborhood. The way it is now, it does not. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno.
Oh, yeah, and if I have any extra minutes, I'd like to give them to our friend, our architect, Mr. Baba, because he's got a PowerPoint.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it doesn't work that way.
And who did that?
Doesn't work that way, I appreciate that.
Oh, because we were told we could do that.
Thank you, no, he won't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, you can have a seat. What I'd like to do--
But he can write a card.
They can submit a card for--
If they want to, if they want to speak, they can submit a card.
Okay, I have, wait, okay. Just let me share the enough--
We are in the middle of a procedure, thank you. Mr. Firestone, Paul Firestone? Have you filled out a card?
I see the card is there somewhere, but let me speak to him because I'm the one that really in charge of this project.
So you have 15 minutes.
Yes, good evening. My name is Raymond Monroe, and I'm a trustee for the Chevy Chase Trust, and the beneficiary of the trust is my daughter and my niece. And basically, what we're trying to do is to build a home for the family there. My experience has been over 30 years in real estate development and construction. Most of my projects are hillside projects, so I'm very familiar in building homes on hillside. And along with that, with my experience, I hire very important and very classified people to do the work for this type of projects. We have hired architects, we hire a civil engineer, we hire a survey, we hire soil people, we hire a harbinger, and everybody confer together and try to come up with the best design that we can come up with for this project. And we work very close with the planning department so we can meet all the criteria, all the codes, and we come up with a very, very nice project. And along with that, we try to minimize the amount of grading, and we place the house where we felt that would be less grading and also not to bother with 19 or 24 oak trees that we have in the property, which is all toward the front of the property. Lucky enough for us, the property faces two streets, which really work to advantage because the fire department really lacks the idea of having access for trucks to come in around the property and get out in case of a fire. So that is all taken care of, and the hydrology, we recognize there is some problem with drainage in the past. We have an hydrologist that spent a lot of time to look over basically what the hydrology will do, and it come with a very, very nice plan for us for this project. And we have also harbingers that look at all the oak trees and make recommendation of what we need to do, which we have already accept to do. One of them was to make sure that we prune the trees right away. We obtained permit, and the trees were pruned under a permit that was issued by the city of Glendale. And I hear complaint about people saying we did this and do that, we don't do anything wrong, and we have picture here if you guys like to see before we purchased the property, that right here was made by one of these persons--
Sir, you guys are going to talk over there.
There, that shows the for sale sign that was there in 2012, and you notice the driveway was already there. All we did when we get there, they should be very happy that we purchased this property because we cleaned that property very nicely, we create, we cleaned that driveway, we put some trees there, which my wife likes to do, but of course, the harbingers, we had the harbingers come in and look at it, there is no problem. They complain about every time I go on the land, they complain, they call the city, they say I'm doing this, doing that, I do grading, this is lol. I don't know where they're getting that from because we don't grade anything there, we just clear, we have labor there, we cleaned this property very, very nice. So, now with the code and everything else we work, my wife like Spanish design, and this design fit very well with the Glendale because it seemed like the community really likes Spanish houses. So it fit very well now. In term of the size of the house, Mr. Rohan is complaining, his address is 2500 Chevy Chase Drive, and this is another piece of paper, says choose the size and percentage of the land that's being used. And if you look at his house, 2500, 2512, you will see that we have over 81,000 square feet of land, and he has 15, and he has almost the same amount of square footage. If there is a monstrosity, I believe it's Mr. Rohan's house because that doesn't fit with the area at all, and we have no complaint. We have no complaint against anybody, we just want to live there peacefully, you know, and build a nice house for my family, so I don't quite understand all these things. I have something I don't know if I should bring it up in the meeting, the reason why this is all about. Now, I have picture also here that shows the location of the home.
You can't talk when you're out of the mic.
And also, this man claim about his backyard, we have all the oak trees--
You've got to go back to the mic, sir.
Talks about blocking his, don't see his pool, you can see all the tree block that, we even put a wire fence, we tried to go some vine to cover that to satisfy because he was complaining about that last time. Now, in term of everything else, I don't see any problem, the city find no problem, it's a beautiful looking home, somebody should be very happy to see this home in that neighborhood, and also for the kind of care we take about our property, they can see it already because of all the cleanup we have done in the area. Now, I might add, in closing, that the reason for this, Mr. Rohan, when the property was for sale, wanted to buy the property also. I offer more money, I acquire the property, Mr. Rohan went to the real estate office, threatening the people there, also threatening to sue the bank because they sold me the property. After that, it's been nothing but a headache for me, it turned on my side, he even threatened my wife and my daughter.
All right, just, please, and let's keep into this subject as opposed to--
Yeah, threatening them, telling there is snake on the property, all these things, okay? Even blackmail me, telling me--
Okay, sir, stick to the subject. Personalities have nothing to do--
Okay, we'll leave it because he attacked me, he kept mentioning my name, so I'm responding back to him.
Sir, this is not the forum for complaint about an attack or a snake in that matter.
Right, okay, good.
So let's stick with--
So basically, I might close this by saying this is a family home, although they keep saying that it's for investment, it's not, we happen to be living in the canyon for over three years, we love the canyon, okay? The opportunity came up, we bought that land because I have all the experience, I see the possibility of having a nice residence there. That's why I bought this property, okay? And it's going to be for my family to live in, that erase the fact that they're going to bring up is all investment to make money, that is not true. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and this property happened to be very convenient for my daughter because she loves it there. loves it there and she's close to school, it's very convenient for her. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Thotler, I believe now the appellate gets, what, five minutes?
Do you have any other, oh, the, well, that was just the, you had the appellate, then you had the applicant, and now you have your other speakers?
And then I-
When all your other speakers are done, then the applicant, correct?
Okay, so let's go to Mr. Viggen Garibian.
Good evening, I'm Viggen Garibian. Long resident of Glendale and 20 years resident of Chevy Chase Canyon. Right about, I've got to tell you, I'm not against this project, but I am against the CUP that it has been approved due to the fact that, not only based on our research, but presentation that Mr. Hamilton made. Obviously, the staff has been misled, misinformed, based on erroneous information on the plans. And I personally think as a president, the city has to revoke the CUP and take measures for the applicant, for the CUP to bring the hillside back to its natural state that was up to 2012. I'm gonna hand you this handout. Contrary to what Mr. Hamilton said, the grading was not done prior to five years. Please look at the pages in front of you and please ignore the top date because that was just cut and paste and it was by error, look at the dates down below. And I'm kind of surprised, in this day and age, with five minutes of research on Google Earth, you can find all of this. And the staff failed to see this and they're saying grading was done five years ago? I live across Chevy Chase, up on the hill, and one Saturday last year, I woke up to jackhammering and bulldozers running on a Saturday. I looked and I thought that the city was doing some cleanup there due to a flood a few months back, I believe. So if you look at those datelines, you'll see clearly that up to 2013, I believe it's the third page or fourth page, 4/16 of 2013 is when the grading occurred. Prior to that, there was no grading. And the applicant claims that he's doing minimal grading, of course, because he removed the majority of it, right in front of my eyes. He removed dirt illegally without a permit and Mr. Julio Acusa has come out there and confirmed, there was no grading permit. He's removed quite a bit of soil and destroyed the natural habitant. So I believe as a president, the city should make him restore the hillside to its original grading based on this map, this can be bought, I mean, purchased, you know, for better resolutions and then start from zero. Because if you don't, you're sending a message to all those unscrupulous people out there that you can do something, shoot and then ask questions later. That's not the way the city should work. And one of the speakers in the previous case said, do we have rules in this city? Yes, we do. But if we don't hold the citizens to it, might as well not have it. And we very well know in Glendale, a lot of things like that happen and we need to stop that. Unless the commission or the staff has reason to let the applicant not play by the rules and do as he wishes, you know, we should revoke this CUP and start from zero. And that grading was done illegally, there is no permit, we've researched it, there is no allowance for it, and he took it upon himself to do it. So again, just to reiterate, I'm not against the project, let him do it, but let him restore the hillside and then start from zero. And the reason he's done it is because he misrepresented the pads, the contours, everything to put the house where he wants, not where the staff would let him do. Anyway, I'm done and hope that you turn this down as a president.
Thank you, Mr. Garibian. Next speaker is Diana Donahue.
Can I see my moments to-
Can you do what?
Can he speak for me?
Can she give her minutes to Mr.-
Has she filled, has she, has he filled out a card?
Yes, he has.
Then he's got his-
It's really good, it's really important.
Well, hang on, ma'am. Who is the person that you want to, what's your name, sir?
Bobak Nasapour.
Why don't you come and take the podium, take your time? Mr. Nasapour.
Bobby Nasapour.
Taking you out of order, but that's all right, go ahead.
Well, it's okay if you want to take the other ones.
No, it was hers.
So I have, I have written a letter that I think all the commissioners have copies of, and this contains a lot of details about my findings and my investigations about the property. My name is Bobby Nasapour and I live directly across the street from the development. My windows overlook the guest house and the main house, it's right in the backyard of my house.
I'm sorry, can you pull that, yeah, there you go.
Now, as you know, the building on a hillside is a difficult task, especially when you deal with the steep hillsides such as this one. As an architect, when you design a structure on the hillside, different components have to relate one to the other. A small change in one component can affect all the other components of the design, such as the driveway profile and slope of the land and the height of the retaining walls. I believe that one of the reasons that we have this CUP process is to investigate that before the project initiates. There are many issues with the application that was submitted by the applicant and the documents that were submitted by the applicant. The average slope of 52% as indicated in the topography map and documented as 56% on the CUP approval letter, I took to take some measurements, my own, by calibrating the design and the topography and I think is more close to 66%. I may be incorrect on my calculations, but this is inconsistency since the paperwork submitted to the city for consideration. The applicant indicates that he's only cutting 1,000 cubic yards of land. Based on my calculations, and I can show that to you in a physical form, that he's closer to 2,400 cubic yards of cut, not to mention the fill and not to mention the roadway that he has to build. Also, the applicant indicates that there are no retaining walls higher than five feet in his application. There is no way that you can build a 4,000 square feet on a 56% slope with five-foot retaining walls. It's just erroneous. And again, I can show you on the documentations how that is proven. The sections are drawn wrong, the floor elevations are wrong, the slab elevations are wrong, there is no top of the wall elevations indicated anywhere. The slope of the driveway is wrong. Now, the applicant's location that he chose for the house is completely erroneous, it's right in the middle of the drainage pad, bypassing all the flat land and accessibility to the side and sticking it up way up in the hill. The guest house, as we discussed, the way it's designed is completely erroneous and unbuildable. You cannot build a structure in there within 15-foot height limitation. We can see just by looking at it, it is 22 feet high as is presented. So how could you, how could you approve an application for CUP with erroneous data? Also, the driveway that he proposes to build is 20% slope at the beginning, at the end, and 7% slope in the middle, and it does not comply with the city of Glendale's standards for driveway profile. How could, how could the city even start to entertain approving of a design that has no accuracy, is inconsistent, is not to scale, the plans are not to scale? You put a scale to the plans and a 20 feet measures 15 feet. You look at the floor elevations, the site plan says 550, the floor plan says 555, and the cross section says 565. How could you even consider approving such? I think approving of applicant's application is just sets bad precedence to all the future applicants, that, you know, you put anything in front of us, we don't care, we'll approve it, and the designer review board will take care of it. That's erroneous. To me, it's an insult to my neighborhood and people who live in Glendale to consider approval of the CUP. This project should not go any further out, it should be stopped right now before it gets out of hand and poses dangerous consequences to the neighborhood. In conclusion, I'd like to urge the council and commissioners to reject the project based on inaccuracy, misrepresentation, and held the applicant responsible to restore the damage that he has caused to the hillside.
Mr. Nasser, what are we doing here?
I've got the permission to-
Okay, so whose permission did you get to put in there? Okay, so we do have your information here, so, you know, we're trying to-
Powerpoint, powerpoint isn't working.
Thank you, please have a seat.
It's, yeah, if you, just in case you have questions, so I can explain that to you later.
Thank you, Mr. Nasser, hang on a second. You have a question from Nasser, Mr. Nasser, go ahead.
Ms. Nasser, did you bring this, you know, what you just presented to us during the officers' hearing?
That is another problem that I have with the-
No, did you?
I did.
Because I mean, before him to make the decision, you know, you're accusing or you're saying that, you know, he didn't have all the information on this project.
Yes.
Are you saying that there was, there were erroneous data, which then, you know, this commission will look at? But all I'm asking is that, has this been brought to the, you know, hearing officer's attention in the past?
This was submitted to them last week in a letter format and an email format.
After the decision.
After the decision, yes.
After the decision.
Now, the problem is that I never received the notice for the hearing, and this goes back to the previous applicant. I know you're gonna say, we mail it to you, but I have never received, if it was not because of Virginia, I wouldn't know what he was doing across. And I talked to Mr. Monroe, I said, show me your plans, let me see what you're doing. Still haven't seen it.
Didn't you say that you heard, you woke up by jackhammers and all of that? How could you not found it was you? Okay, so you didn't wake up by jackham-
I have seen the same thing. I have, I've seen bulldozers, I have seen dirt hauling away from the property.
And that did not raise a red flag for you, sir?
I didn't know what he was doing or he was, maybe it was the city. I don't know where his property is. I know there was a pathway and they were working on the pathway. I didn't know that was part of his property.
Thank you. Ms. Landrigan.
Mr. Nasapour, thank you for these. I appreciate the diligence that you put into reviewing them. Your calculations, I don't, have never heard of PFA, who the architects are, so I don't know who they are. And I think looking at this would be hard for me to refute it or not, but I really think that it's important for the kind of observations that you have made and calculations for you, that you've made for the city to look at them in addressing some of the issues because it does affect the final determination. If your calculations are close, and that would be important to me. The other question I have to you is, so when were you able to get hold of the plans?
About a week ago.
And were you asked, did you ask for them based upon other concerns in the neighborhood? You just wanted to see them and then you started doing your calculations?
Ms. Virginia went to the city and got hard copies. We were even, we didn't, I didn't even know that CUP was approved until-
And you used the 24 by 36 or the-
No, I used the, I used the, I use a program called the Blue Beam. That you can get any kind of a PDF and you can calibrate the scale on it.
Okay.
And that that you can measure and do alterations to the drawing based on that calibration.
Thank you.
And that's how I found out that it's there not to scale.
All right, thank you, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
One more question from Commissioner.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, before we really go on, you know, I want to hear from Mr. Hamilton, you know, if he had a chance to look at this thing and to really, you know-
Let me just have, you don't have any questions for, please have a seat, thank you.
I'll be available if you need.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton.
As, you know, Commissioner Landrigan was pointing to, you know, we don't really know at this point in time whether or not these numbers are real, you know, legit. So I want to hear from Mr. Hamilton, and if we need time to review this, you know, numbers, then we need to come back and readdress this.
Thank you, yeah, I've reviewed Mr. Nasapour's comments in some detail over the last couple of days, and I'll try to go sort of point by point. One of his primary allegations is that the plans are either erroneous or fraudulent, especially in how it depicts the cross-sections through the hill and that they're, that the house or the driveway profile is inaccurate. I can't evaluate the whole thing, but what I did do is I looked at this section line on the plans, which corresponds to, trying to find it on here. It roughly corresponds to this section here. We see the stairway in the house, we see the two retaining walls. What I saw is, here's the 570-foot contour line, which is at the top, basically at the top of this retaining wall. It intersects basically the top of this retaining wall, which is the upper retaining wall. This is a two-to-one slope. When I do the math for how much fall there would be and compare it with the finished floor here of the patio at 558, it seems to be within a foot or two of what the applicant is asserting. It may be slightly different, but I don't see a gross inaccuracy. They're asserting that the driveway profile is both too steep, doesn't meet code, and that it may be, you know, higher in some places than others. Again, you can see that in the driveway from here to here essentially follows the contour. So it's roughly flat, it goes up slightly, it may be go down slightly, but it's generally following the hillside. It's not climbing or descending a lot. It climbs and it descends or climbs a lot in the curve here as it's climbing up the hill, which you can see in the photographs. And it will climb considerably up in this area. One of the assertions by Mr. Nasapour is that the code says that that can only happen for a maximum length of 40 feet. That's not true for this zone. In the R1R zone, the 20% slope that's allowed as a maximum slope for a driveway can exist for the whole driveway, other than the transitional areas at the bottom and the top. There is no limit on how long that 20% can occur. It's, it's, there's no, there's no doubt that this profile is going to have to be refined. You're not going to have a driver that does this and comes to a point there. During the, during the plan check process, this is going to be refined and it will, and it will have to achieve appropriate transitions between the 20% and the flatter areas. But it does look like it's feasible to both us in planning staff and the city engineers' function and the fire department, none of which have raised any significant concerns about the proposed driveway design. There's much, much point been made about the aerial photographs and how they seem to show that there was no grading earlier. In my opinion, that this very rough 2002 aerial photograph that was given to us just this evening may actually show the graded path. In any event, the other photographs from 2008 and other times, they show a hillside that has grass growing on it. They don't, there's no way to tell, you can't see whether or not the grading is actually there. As I say, because the, you can see the graded roadway on our, in our GIS, I know for a fact that it is derived from aerial photographs that are at least five years old. So the roadway, some version, some earlier version, maybe a narrower, maybe a smaller, maybe a less graded version of it certainly has existed for at least five years. It couldn't, it could not possibly be in our GIS system otherwise. So I think what happened is it was graded some time ago, maybe 10 years ago, maybe 20 years ago. Then it was, then it overgrew with grass and other shrubs, which is why it tends to disappear in the, in the intermediate photographs. And now Mr. Monroe has gone out there and done some additional grading to clean it up, as he says. But I think substantially that roadway- But I think substantially that roadway has, has occurred, has been there for some time. Much point has been made about the non-conforming guesthouse. Staff missed this early on, we should have advised the applicant that it was too tall. I acknowledge that, that Mr. Nasserpour has pointed out that it is too tall, and the applicant's been made aware of it. I would also suggest it's not really a fundamental part of the project. The project doesn't live or die on whether or not the guesthouse is there. If it has to be eliminated entirely, the applicant has told me that they will still pursue the project. There may be a way to redesign it to meet code. He still had, he also has the opportunity to apply for a variance, to try to exceed height. I'm not sure that that's especially wise, but he could, he could try to do that.
Did you have engineering help with the calculations of the cubic yards based upon some of the numbers here provided by Mr. Nasserpour?
When I, no, it hasn't, I haven't had enough time to do that, and typically, when we send the plans upstairs to engineering, I don't specifically ask them to confirm whether the cubic yards calculation seem accurate. If they see something grossly inaccurate, they will tell us, but they made no comment about the original numbers, and based on my analysis of the hillside, I don't see that there's any gross inaccuracy in what's being proposed. That's not to say that in the final, when this goes through plan check, the retaining walls might end up being seven feet high instead of five feet high. It's, that's entirely possible. For, if there are minor deviations from what this commission approves, staff has the authority to allow those to occur without bringing it back to the commission. If there are significant deviations, if at plan check, the retaining walls become 15 feet high, staff would not approve that without bringing it back to some board or commission for review.
And what is minor? Two feet, three feet?
That's an open question. That's an open question. There is no, there is no specific number of what, as to what constitutes minor. If you would like to, if you would like to give direction on that tonight, then certainly I think you could give direction on that.
What is the limit on export and grading?
There, there is no limit on it. If it's, if it's more than 1,500 cubic yards, then it needed this, the conditional use permit process, so, and that's why, in this case, one of the reasons why they needed a CP. But we've had projects that had far more grading, 4,000 cubic yards comes to mind for a single-family home. It's, it's a balancing act about whether, how much traffic is being generated, and how much dust is created by that grading, and how much those trucks are going through the neighborhood.
Mr. Hamilton, do you feel comfortable? I know you had one week's time to review this, and I'm kinda, I'm hearing what you're saying as far as your explanation of validating the design here, but also Commissioner Landrigan was asking, has these numbers been really verified? Now, do you, do you feel, because we depend on your guidance, your expertise, do you feel that you need additional time to really go through these numbers to either discredit this, or validate the drawings so that we have a little bit clearer picture, or do you feel comfortable enough that we have enough information here to just go on and then let the system, our plan check system do its, take its course?
I feel comfortable making a recommendation. If you feel that you would want additional sets of eyes to evaluate this, and to, and to really run an additional set of grading calculations or other evaluation, that's, I think you have that purview, but the city attorney can maybe advise about whether that exceeds your scope or not. I will say this, if the applicant, these plans essentially are part of a compact that the, that the city forms with the applicant. If he proposes something that is dramatically different during the plan check process, then he has a problem. So he is bound by the essential outlines of this plan. So if, if he deviates significantly from that, he will have a problem.
See, it's the outlines of this plan that the speaker just raised the red flag with. I mean, we're not talking about a couple of hundred cubic feet of difference, we're talking about 1,200 cubic feet difference between the calculations that has been submitted to you by the applicant and what, quote-unquote, the represent, or one of the representatives for the appellant is, is asserting at this point.
Well, so...
That's the issue.
One of the ways...
Which also has a lot of earth-moving and truck movement on the street, so, and that would affect your environmental consideration.
It could.
It does.
One of the, one of the ways that staff makes a decision about whether something is significant is we make, we ask ourselves, would the, would the commissioner board want to see this again? Would they want to see this change? And you've, I'm hearing that if it's 1,000 cubic yards more than what is proposed here, you would want to see that change. Then I would not approve it at staff level, and we would bring it back to the commission.
At least from my point of view, that's not the issue. The issue is that the entire report, integrity of the report, and the word falsehood was used, and misrepresentation was used. Those are two kind of chunky words for my appetite, and that's the issue. It's not just 1,000 cubic feet. You begin to think, okay, so grading or no grading, Google or no Google, 2008, 2013, what is going on, and you clarified your end of it, and so those are the kind of thoughts that are creeping into my mind at this moment.
I can only tell you that, I've been doing this for 18, actually 25 years. Chris Chu in the city engineer's office has looked at this, he has great experience. There are other staff that have a lot of experience. We do not see a significant deviation from reality, or from what is proposed, and I don't think that Mr. Nasserpour's objections are well-founded in, in, in large part. I feel fairly comfortable about that.
Very good. Thank you, I'd like to...
I do want to say one more thing, though. And Mr. Nasserpour is the one who brought up to you the fact that the...
The guesthouse.
The guesthouse is certainly outside of the code. I, I'm, we're not saying that you're imperfect or perfect, we're saying that things happen that you take at face value what's submitted to you, and you use your calculations based upon that. Somebody else wants to look at it, and they see something else. I just don't know if we've had enough time to look at it to verify whether there are further inaccuracies in the plan that's submitted. And to me, I, I'm a landscape architect, I submit plans, I've, I've made mistakes, but when you do a mistake in grading, it has hydrologic consequences as well as other consequences that are for health, safety, and welfare, and those are things that bring me to pause over, you know, not being able to look at it in a better manner.
Well, I, again, I looked at all the objections raised by Mr. Nasserpour. Of all the objections, the only one that I see has significant merit is the guesthouse height.
Very good. I don't want to get involved in deliberation, this is not the time for it, so...
No, I have one more question, though, just clarification. The applicant submitted a list of all the square footage for each, each home in the neighborhood, and his was at 3,700 square feet, but the application says 4,100. Which one, which one is accurate, square footage?
The guesthouse is not counted in that, he's, he's, with the total, with the guesthouse and the house is 41 or 4190.
It said, the total said 37.
Hey, ma'am, thank you.
And I can't, I can't find that sheet anymore, I don't know what I did with it.
The sheet, it was just passed around.
Yeah, yeah. Is that with the guesthouse not included?
Yes.
Where's the, where's the reduction? Give me a minute to try to find the reduced set of plans that we're, what we're referring to. Right there.
Well, maybe until you find it.
Okay, so, Mr. Hamilton, I don't want to stop this proceedings right now, so you do your homework, I'd like to go to the next speaker. Berline Haller.
Actually, I had been going to my business, Mr. Nasserpour.
Okay, so, so here is where the conundrum we have. We don't share minutes with each other, if you don't mind. I'll be more than happy to, if there is somebody else that hasn't spoken, to fill out a court, and we'll listen to them. Okay, next one. Jean Simone.
Hi there, I'm Jean Simone, I live on St. Andrews Drive. I truly believe in live and let live. I've lived in Chaby Chase Canyon for over 20 years, and have watched and appreciated many houses being built in my neighborhood. If you own a buildable lot, and respect your neighbors and the hillside ordinance, and I cross my fingers you have a talented architect, I welcome you, and the neighborhood welcomes you. If there are small issues, we have meetings and find compromises, working together to reach a solution that works for the new homeowner as well as neighbors. It's called a community working together. When there is a blatant disregard for the neighborhood, the community is up in arms. Today, this neighborhood community is really up in arms. A 5,000-square-foot house, I guess it's not quite 5,000, built on Chaby Chase Canyon that can be seen from St. Andrews Drive, Cascadia Drive, and Kennington, is a blatant disregard for the neighborhood. I'm not here to talk about the incredible amount of dirt to be removed, the work done without permits, the cutting down of trees, or the misrepresentations. I'm here to simply say it's just too big and does not fit into the canyon neighborhood. The peacefulness of canyon living will be disrupted, which, which seems to mean nothing to this home builder. It will be an enormous eyesore that disrupts, disrupts the harmony of all who live nearby or look down upon it from the streets above. The proposed 4134-square-foot house is much larger than those nearby. Its size needs, its size needs to be reconsidered. Its placement on the property, which gives it a fortress-like feeling looking down on neighbors, also needs to be reconsidered. The privacy and respect of the neighbors needs to be reconsidered. This is a very large lot, surely something that doesn't antagonize so many of the surrounding homeowners could have been conceived. That, however, takes respect. Respect for the hillside guidelines, respect for the canyon community as a whole, and especially the respect for nearby neighbors. That is missing, and that's why we're all here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is, hang on a second, Mr. Hamilton, are you ready?
Yeah, so based on the plans that are on the wall, we've got a 4,985-square-foot house and garage. If we subtract the garage area of about 819 square feet, we get a house area of 4,166 square feet, not 4,143. And then there's, and then in addition, there's a 500-square-foot guesthouse.
Okay, got it.
Very good. So the next speaker is, and I'm not sure if I'll get the first name, but is it Whiffler?
Graham Whiffler.
Graham Whiffler.
My name is Graham Whiffler, I live in the valley, I have photos, I'm on the Board of Directors of the CCA, and I just kind of got, I don't know, tangled up in this inadvertently.
If you just give it to us one last...
And I got it, it's that too.
They just, just give it to the lady over there.
There you go. So how I got into this was, the homeowners had concerns, and they wanted to tell the Chaby Chase Estates Association their concerns. I went over to their house, and they told us their concerns, and while they were talking, somebody said, "And they built this fence." Because they were mad at us, they built this fence. And so after our meeting, we went out and we looked at the fence, and I saw that fence, and you know, I'm not, I'm not a technical person, I'm not an architect, but I looked at that fence, I said, "That's something really fishy there, I'd call, I'd call Neighborhood Services, because that fence doesn't smell, pass a smell test." And sure enough, they had to remove the fence. Now, the fence did two things. It, it took away one of the homeowner's access to her carport, which the people that, the homeowners had been using for probably 30 years. It's a 30-year-old carport. Took that away. It was a spite fence, it was put up just to show them that they weren't to be messed with, the owner was angry. The other thing the fence did, it, it's, it's a wooden dam, because it sits on a floodplain, it sits on a wash. Now fortunately, it was taken down, but if there was a big rain like we had in 2005, it would probably fall down, but it would first divert the water to either side into two people's homes. So fence was a problem. Then after we saw the fence, I walked up, and there was all this grading, and it was fresh grading, and along the grading, had, and it, it didn't look, you know, I don't know grading, but it just didn't look right, because instead of a retaining wall, somebody put, um, um, the sandbags instead of a retaining wall, and the sandbags went along where the water's supposed to flow, and there was a little ditch dug out to handle the stream that comes down. And then there was more grading, and along the grading, landscaping had started. The landscaping, you can see, are cedars. Now, it just, it just struck me as being nuts, in that you would start landscaping before you'd finished building your house, before you'd done the grading, and before you even had permission to build. It was just, it was just, everything was backwards. And then what finally got me was a little stairway cut into the hill, because to me, this represented, it was just nutty. It was, it was almost like kids building a fort, and they, and they go off on their own, and they start their project, and they build the fort. Anyway, the bigger, the, the big pictures there go to show the grading happened very recently. The big picture is from Google, it's dated October 11th, or October 2011, and you can see that there's no grading there, that's the big picture I gave you, the big one, that one there. And you can also see the carport on the right-hand side, where people had been parking for 30 years. On the second picture that I took about two weeks ago, you can see all the fresh grading. Now that grading is, you know, ad hoc amateur grading, and it's done right on top of the wash, it's probably not on a property line, and it, and it's, at the deepest part, maybe eight feet deep. So when the rains come, it's going to be a big problem, and that's all I had to say. I'm just speaking to the credibility of, of the whole project and what I saw.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next speaker is Brian Duran.
My name is Brian Duran, I'm the co-president of the Chaby Chase Estates Association, I speak for the Chaby Chase Board of Directors. What I'm here tonight to say is that we do not have an objection to a house being built on this property, we just have an objection to where it is being built and how the process has proceeded. For purposes of this hearing, we believe that the information provided by the owner has compromised the hearing officer's decision. Since this body considers the appeal to determine whether the hearing officer's decision to approve is flawed, either through logical flaw, misinterpretation, inadvertence, or missing information, we think the approval should be overturned because of what appears to be a significant amount of either incorrect or missing information that is related to this proposed house. The integrity of the information submitted by the owner has been called into question by what appears to be bad-faith dealings with the city. This owner has demonstrated, based on testimony by the various residents, that he's had a complete disregard for proper permits. He brags to the residents that he can do, quote, "whatever he wants," end quote, because he, quote, "knows the right people in the city," end quote. He disregards the advice, advice of city inspectors, as Virginia mentioned, the inspector was out and was stupefied that all of the work had been done, contrary... had been done contrary to what he had advised. And apparently, he's misstated a lot of things in his technical documents that have been submitted to the commission or to the city. Other facts that have been required on plans for the city's review seem to be in question also. We're unclear as to the degree and the specificity of these, but there are just too many questions at this point. It's also troubling to us that the city has incorporated the owner's unpermitted grating into its rationale for approving the project. It seems clear from just my experience, living in the canyon all this time and looking up Laird Drive, it was open meadow, it was normal landscape, and it changed considerably over time. It's also troubling that the driveway for this property has been sighted in two different places. The one that accesses Chevy Chase Drive is extremely steep. We covered another case before the commission that ultimately went to the city council that had to do with a very steep driveway. So, I'm very familiar with the grades here, and all you have to do is try walking up it, and you know generally it's going to be a difficult sell. So, therefore, the access on Laird Drive is troubling because it wasn't there before, until the owner apparently graded it without permit, and it has been included in the city's evaluation. One other thing that is unclear is whether topographical maps were actually used to confirm what grading has been done and what grading hasn't been done. Those maps are available. We don't know if in the two-foot sections it will show that, but we think that may be something that could have been looked at. One other thing I'd like to talk about is to refer to a decision on 14 Colina Drive that happened this January, where the city council overturned a project similar to this. They ultimately denied the project because it compromised the privacy of neighbors. In that case, they referred to drawings and plans that did not accurately reflect the layout of the project and its relationship to adjoining properties. Also, materials presented didn't include photos of story poles from the vantage point of adjacent properties. Photos that were submitted for this project were very inadequate, especially for those residents who live across Chevy Chase Drive. If you go up on Kennington, Cascadia, and you look across, you've probably seen the photos that are, have been photoshopped so that you can see what that house is going to look like across the hill. That is not integrated into the environment, which is contrary to the hillside ordinance. We believe 2512 Chevy Chase has not been properly described because of the owner's cavalier approach to this project and submission of incomplete and/or incorrect information on which the hearing officer based his decision. It is within your purview to reverse this decision based on incomplete information, and we suggest that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lizette Monroe, or is it Monroe?
Good evening. My name is Lizette Monroe. My father wants to build us a house in this canyon because we love this canyon, and it's convenient for my school. That's all I wanted to say today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Very good. There is, I believe, one more card, if I'm not wrong. Mr. Simonian, Art Simonian?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Art Simonian. I'm also a licensed architect. I live directly across the canyon from the subject site. I'm within 500 feet. I'm not here as a city commissioner. I'm not here as a design review board member. I'm here as a neighbor. The rendering that you see, it's actually taken from my house that basically depicts the story poles, correct? And the gigantic secondary ridge, and then the primary ridge behind it, which is actually, you know, public property, which was acquired by City of Glendale some time ago. And that is an accurate depiction of the rendering of the house, which is not up on the hill, which has been scaled down and superimposed. As illustrated and as witnessed, the site has been illegally graded without a grading permit. And of course, the site is much steeper than depicted as well. I could attest to that. I have a bird's-eye view of the site. I spent quite a bit of time on my deck, and I could attest personally that Mr. Monroe is there all the time, and he's always doing work. You hear jackhammers, you see stuff being graded, you see dirt being taken away. I've illustrated that to Mr. Hamilton at the last hearing, but for whatever reason, it wasn't followed through until, hopefully now, where the engineering department has, you know, caught wind and have gotten involved. Hopefully, now through serious investigation, we'll be able to realize that the entire base of the CUP as approved was based on a slope calculation, and it was also a cut-and-fill calculation. That's what Mr. Collin based his decision on. Since then, and even previous to then, as been depicted, there's been a lot of legal grading. And so, the cut-and-fill is much more than depicted on the application, and the slope is much more than depicted on the survey. There is a survey behind you, and I'd like to pass it out as well. This was downloaded from the city's website. It was actually part of the case file. It's dated November 2012. It was submitted, I assume, by the applicant. It's part of the city's website. I downloaded from the website. It does not show a graded driveway. It does not show a graded pad. And I don't know what it's going to take for Mr. Hamilton to start believing the public that lives across the canyon, that there were bulldozers going in and out, taking dirt out of there. I just don't know what else you need to hear, Mr. Hamilton. I really don't. That said...
You're addressing us, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
That said, what should occur? I don't think anybody's against a house being built. The house should be built somewhere on that side. There's two perfectly good areas for it to be located. It could be located at the end of Laird, which is much in conformance to the surrounding neighborhood. It's compatible. There's homes along there. It's a cul-de-sac. It's a legal street. It should be a home at the end of the cul-de-sac, absolutely. Or it should be placed on Chevy Chase. He has over 130 feet of frontage, or somewhere thereabout. Or it should be placed there. Will it be a smaller home? Absolutely. Is it going to be a 4,200-square-foot home plus a 500-square-foot accessory space? No. Does everybody have the right to build such a home that's so much bigger than the surrounding context? No. That's what the design review board is all about. That will be dealt with. However, the issue is that this was one of the last cases that's going through the last, that previous system, where there is a separate CUP hearing, and then it goes to the DRB for design. It was literally one of the last ones that went through. As of now, everything's going to come front of the design review board. And so, these kind of cases are troubling, and that's why the city has changed its procedure, because it kind of handcuffs the DRB. There's all this smokescreen that comes up. The CUP's been dealt with. The cut-and-fill's been dealt with. The slope of the site has been dealt with. The overall orientation and access has dealt with. You, DRB, should only focus in on the design. Well, as we all know, and that's why procedures have changed, design, especially in the hillside area, is directly, directly as a result of site orientation. One needs to nestle the house onto the hillside, which this is not doing. One needs to terrace the house backwards, fill the hillside design guidelines, which this is not doing. This is taking a two-story Tuscan that should be placed middle of a five-acre flat lot somewhere out in the meadows and forcing it down into the Chevy Chase Canyon. And the problem where I would think you would have a lot more people in objection here if you could see it from Chevy Chase, but you can't. You start seeing it as you move up in the canyon. That's the great thing about the canyon, or the interesting about the canyon. It's like a fishbowl. The higher you move up in the canyon, your perspective immediately changes. It's a horrible precedent, total disregard for codes and laws. He's done as he pleases, and it has to stop. CUP needs to be reversed, in my opinion. He needs to bring the site to its original condition. He needs to get accurate drawings which depict the previous contours.
Thank you, Mrs. Simonian. Wrap it up, please.
And then, he should design a building that would fit to that, and then, all of a sudden, your cut-and-fill is going to be double what he's presenting, and your slope's going to be steeper.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to talk.
Very efficient use of your time. I think I'm, Mr. Hamilton?
Just one tidbit of information. I've referred a few times to the GIS showing the cut, and here it is, anyway. And you can see that it shows a path essentially running from Chevy Chase.
It says 10-7-13. So, when was the GIS done? What aerials was it taken from? This information is not substantiated, so I'm glad, but it could have been done last November, which it looks like it was.
By the same token, a lot of the pictures that are here could have been very easily done differently.
The map was generated last October, but the data is at least five years old. I've been using it for at least five years.
The data, so it doesn't get updated, that data?
Not every year, no. The city engineer's office could confirm the actual date of that data.
Okay, that would, you know, that would be more helpful.
Ms. Studdler is, after, of course, if they have any questions, they can. But now, it's Mr. Monroe's time to do the five-minute, right?
Correct. It's the applicant's opportunity, followed by the appellant, for a five-minute rebuttal.
Right. So, I think by now, everybody knows that Mr. Monroe is the applicant. But thank you for your clarification. Mr. Monroe?
Very much to allow me to speak again. I heard all the testimonies, what everybody's been saying about grading, illegal stuff. I have nothing on the record stating that we have done any illegal thing on the property. We never grade. Yes, we did have some jackhammer, doing some digging to put some trees there, okay? Because my wife loved trees, okay? And this is not the permanent, whatever landscaping that's going to be there. It's few trees that we put there to beautify the land, because we cleaned the driveway and everything. So, we have never been bulldozer on the property, haul a lot of dirt, like everybody's saying. Okay? I don't know where they get this information, but they didn't get it from my property. I don't know where it came from. I never did any grading on the property. I have never done anything illegal. Now, they brought the fact that we have a fence there, yes. We didn't know that the code said we couldn't have the fence there. We put it, it was a temporary fence, and for the reason for that, the neighbors keep going on the property all the time, reaping signs, reaping our plants, and things like that. Our attorney, he was here tonight, but he had to leave. He left, okay? Advised us to put a fence there, because in case those people, the way they're acting, might go over, they'll fall down, and they might sue us for coming on the property, including this lady here. She drives her car on our property to park in her, to go in her backyard, okay? Because whether she, the garage rented out to somebody, it was too much stuff in it, okay? And she was coming to our property to park there, and the attorney advised us to put this gate there. That's why we put it. And when they told us, we had to move it back. We took it down. That's the only thing, okay, that we did, maybe that was not appropriate, and we didn't do it on purpose, okay? And I don't know, they portrayed me as a bad person coming in the neighborhood. They should be very happy that we're going to build such a nice house and try to still be a good neighbor to them, because we have nothing against them. We wish, we like to have, God bless them, because if we ever build this house there, they will see we're not the kind of people they tried to portray us, okay? We're trying to build a house for ourselves to live there, because we love the canyon. We've been renting for three years there, and we love it. It's very good for my daughter. It's a good location, so we like to visit her there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? So, I'm going to be closing the public hearing.
You still have a rebuttal from the appellant. Mr. Rohan.
Well, you are, your name...
Together, you have five minutes.
Mr. Moreno. You've got five minutes.
I just want to say, since I've lived there first since 1998, the path that everybody keeps talking about, it was a path. We used to climb it. We used to use it as a trail, but it was a tiny little thing, like a fire break. We never had a road there or anything like that. We all know that, because we've all lived there. I've been living there since 98, you know? And again, we're not being contentious. We have not tried to give him a hard time or anything like that. We don't walk on his property, whatever. I was, I do have a carport right in the back, where I was maybe two feet driving my car on to drive up. I don't do it anymore. If he doesn't want me to do it or whatever, I'm not into causing any problems. We just really want you to take a really good look at this, you know? And then, if he decides that he does get it, and he's doing everything according to scale, we'll welcome him. But we just have a lot of questions, and we'd really appreciate you using your little magnifying glass. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Lizette, I didn't use up my five minutes. Can we have him give a rebuttal? The architect who came up with all of this...
You know, I'm going to allow only two minutes. That's it. Because you were not part of the, part of the appellate team. Two minutes, sir.
I just want to approach and show you the findings. I just want to talk about Mr. Hamilton.
Okay, I will allow it, but this is the, only one slide. We're not going to turn this into an Adobe Photoshop experiment, okay? One slide, and that's the end of that.
Which one do I approach?
Well, then, do your best and choose the best that has got the most impact.
You have a profile of the driveway proposed.
I think you have to put it up so the cameras can see it. Thank you.
That's your site plan. You have a profile of the driveway proposed with 20%, 7.3, and 20% going down. This does not comply with the profile. But what Mr. Hamilton was telling you is that maximum run of 40 feet, that's not the driveway I was referring to. I'm referring to the driveway from the road into the garage, which in here measures 20 feet by dimension, and the cross-section measures 12 feet. So, the amount of climb in 20 feet is very different than in 12 feet. So, how could, how could he even reach the level of the slab that he proposes? You either have to lower the slab, which can increase the height of the structure, or you're going to push the building back into the hill, which is going to cause more grating. Now, I've done all, I'll show you where the cuts are.
You've got one more minute, sir.
If the topography were shown correctly on the cross-section, it would be very clear that the amount of dirt cut, at least twice or three.
Thank you, sir. All right. No more rebuttals, or whatever, right? We're safe now to use this? We're done. Okay. So, let me ask my colleagues to, if you need any clarifications from Mr. Hamilton, or you have any questions from him, or if not, maybe we should start deliberating.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
You know, I think there's too much, I guess, dust in the air right now. I think it needs to be cleared a little bit. You know, I know Mr. Hamilton said he was very confident with his assessment, but just sitting here, listening to the testimonies, I would feel more comfortable having these questions answered a little bit more in a proper way to, I guess, satisfy those who's, you know, throwing these questions to our staff, so that we also have the right information in front of us to make the decision, to render a decision. So, if other commissioners agree, I really like to have another opportunity to go over these numbers and some of these, the claims, you know, for me to feel comfortable. So, I guess, in a nutshell, I guess I'd like to continue the case to listen more.
Ms. Landrigan?
I appreciate Commissioner Lee's concerns. I share them. One of the ways to create a little bit of confidence would be to have a new survey done. I disagree with applicants that one should restore the hillside. As a landscape architect, it's not realistic, and it's kind of mean-spirited, so I hope it's not brought up again. The reality is, is that a new survey would verify many of the accusations and show how much grading has been done, and the actual...
much grading has been done and the, the actual plans would then be put on the new survey. So if there's been extensive grading, you couldn't even bid the project and get an accurate bid if you've already altered the topography and you go out to bid, even if you're doing it yourself. So, I mean, to bring about some comfort, I would say a new survey that actually showed the road and the pad that we saw in the aerial would verify how much grading. You can actually calculate how much volume is removed then pretty accurately from GIS. So to me, that would solve one of the problems. So to me, to continue it, I would want more information. And that's the kind of information I would be comfortable looking at. It's not our place to, to, here to punish somebody for code infractions. That's another area. That's not for us. But for me to be comfortable with the accuracy of a submission and that a determination was made on, on accurate information is what I would like to ask for. And that's, that's the basis for the request.
Let me ask you a question, Ms. Landrigan. Let's for a moment play the devil's advocate. Suppose the survey comes back and collaborates with whatever the survey information that we have from the city of Glendale. Would that make a difference in your decision as to the house itself, where it's located and so forth? In other words, I don't want to send them out to spend another however many thousands of dollars or hundreds of dollars if you, if it's not going to make a difference in the decision of this commission or?
Well, I think that's a valid question. I think that there are other things to discuss, but I'm responding to Mr. Lee's. And my concern that the information I have here from two different sources do not overlay and make me comfortable that I'm making a decision based upon correct information. That's, would I, would I approve this? I'm not looking at the design. That's not our place.
Site plan, we're talking about?
And I agree with Mr. Simonian that the reason it was sent to the design review board is that site planning is a huge portion of the design and was, and rightfully belongs there. So I think that, is this the best site planning? That's not what I'm supposed to make a determination on.
Mr. Yussain?
Well, first of all, I think it's a beautiful property. I went by there today and I can understand why there's so strong emotion about the property because so many trees, so many oak trees and sycamores. I would love to be near or around there as well. I think the information that Commissioners Landrigan and Lee want clarification would be helpful. For me personally, the, the house as proposed is larger than, than any other house in the neighborhood based on the survey. And, and not commenting on the design, but the, it seems, the massing seems to have more emphasis than other homes in that area. And, and, and I'll say something about the design, but I'm not taking into consideration. But it's, it doesn't look anything like any of the homes in that area. So I'm considering that fact. I'm not considering the FAR as much because most of the lot seems unbuildable because of how steep it is. So you can have a really large lot, but if, if most of it is steep, then, you know, I don't think it's really fair to look at the FAR, you know, because it's much smaller than the other homes. I would rather look at the size and massing of it compared to the neighborhood and how it complements and, and exists with the neighborhood. And since that's one of the conditions that need to be met for this, I would have, I would have a hard time approving it regardless of, you know, whatever clarification that comes back to me. And as far as the, the grading, you know, it seems like there's some grading that's happened. It's not completely conclusive to me, looking at the aerial photos. But I, it obviously seems like there's been some work on it. But, you know, I also hear Mr. Hamilton sigh that, you know, it could have been just some, some kind of a road there that had grass over it and maybe there's been some minimal grading. But, but just the development as proposed, I would have, I would have a hard time proposing it as it is and, and I wouldn't need more further clarification. However, if the developer came back with a different kind of size and, and scale of the project, then I would look at it differently.
So then what's your suggestion, Mr. Yussain, a continuance or a?
Well, I would, I would, I would be comfortable enough to make the decision right now for it because to me, it wouldn't make much difference because it's not, the, the size of the development isn't changing if we ask for clarification. So I wouldn't want the applicant to go waste their time. But if the rest of the commission wants to get, you know, more information, then, then, then I'll go with that as well.
We don't have a, well, we haven't heard you yet totally. I know there is something brewing in there.
Is it under privy of this board to, to give direction as to the massing? I mean, that's, that's, that's someone else's.
It's not.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't think that.
The CUP is what is in front of us.
The square footage and we have to find consistency with the rest of the neighborhood.
Compatibility.
And, and, and the size is, is bigger than, than, than the other homes.
Mr. Foyt, waivers.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I just want to clarify what is before the commission. Right now, as this is going through under the old rules, you do still have jurisdiction over site planning and things like that. In addition, there are the hillside design guidelines in chapter 30.11, section 040, I believe it's A, under which you do have to make some judgment about things like massing, compatibility, orientation that Jeff brought up previously. So I'm not telling you what to do, but I, I don't think you should feel that you can't make a decision based on that.
I mean, and I, we've had cases, hillside cases before that we've commented on the, you know, the scale of it and it's come back before with a slimmer, more, more modest design with setbacks, appropriate setbacks. And so I, I thank you for that because I.
Sure. But if you do deny it, if you do deny it, it probably will come back under the new rules, in which case you probably wouldn't see it again. But I'm sure we would, you know, give record of this conversation to the design review board.
So then they have to come back with variance case rather than CUP if they have to come back?
It would just go to the design review board if it gets denied here because we've changed the procedures. And so the new procedures would take this to the design review and you would no longer have a CUP requirement unless the grading or something triggers it.
Ask for it. It meets.
There are no variances.
There are no variances.
Okay, Ms. Landrigan?
I think the, the site planning of placing it in the middle of the major drainage of the site is flawed. It's, it's against good practice. I think the, the majority of this site drains down that one drainage area. Any of the mitigation of it that is using the swales to the side is going to highly impact the road, whether you want to call it a road, what it is a road now. It is going to shuttle all of that water down onto Chevy Chase and it's going to shuttle it down to Lard. And all of the roof runoff is going to go there too. It's going to, I mean, and I know engineering will deal with it, but at the moment, placing it there is really extremely inappropriate based upon good site planning. So to me, that is an inappropriate place for the sighting of the building. I understand the intent was to nestle it in there and to keep it low, but, you know, there's a higher issue here, which is the natural process that occurs on a hillside. And that cannot be engineered away. You can try to, but nature has succeeded in Glendale in humbling many an engineer and, and will continue to do so. So that, and the unfortunate recipients will be everybody on Chevy Chase and Lard. That said, I, I tend to believe that the size of this is really inappropriately based where it is. It is, it's, it seems very massive. I think if you look at how it's placed on the site, the other place at Lard is also at a drainage area that comes from another property. So the two flat areas are pretty different, but they, they really channel a lot of water. But I don't, I think I would like to see it come back and be redesigned and more appropriately sighted. And I would be happy to deny it. I know it would not come back to us, but I don't have a problem with the design review board working with the applicant to create and craft with the applicant a better solution. Because I'm not here to redesign it. I'm just here to tell you, those are the real big concerns I have about the site planning.
So then are you, would you, would your inclination be denial or continual?
I would deny it. I would vote against it.
Okay, very good.
Clarification question. So on here it says, a design review board, the actual staff report, a design review board application related to construction of a new single-family house is required and would be processed if the CUP is approved. So.
Either way, it's going to go to design review.
They just have different review status based upon what we do.
But it says if it's approved, it'll go.
It is approved already.
Because it was approved. But if we deny it?
Yeah. When the, you know, the.
Goes on to the new one.
Process that was in place up until the code amendments under the task force I believe you served on, said that hillside homes or those on the list of qualifications of the slope, the grading, blah, 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 first got a conditional use permit and then went to the design review board. So when we adopted the ordinance changing that to say, well, from here on out, new applications will just go to DRB, we had to include a section of how to deal with things that are already in process. So we said, if your application is deemed complete by the date of, you know, the effective date of the ordinance, you follow the old rules. So that's what this staff report is based on because they did have a complete CUP application. So we're the commission to approve it, which doesn't sound like it's going to happen tonight, but we're the commission to approve the CUP. Its next step would be the design review board. Now, under the new process, it will go straight to the design review board as well, but those same issues about grading and.
Site planning.
Yeah, will be reviewed by the design review board. Same kind of review you're doing now, they will do on any future application.
So if we deny it and it goes to the design review board, they approve it, what happens?
If, if you deny it, then they had to file a new application. They could come back with the same application to the design review board. That's probably an ill-advised move, but we would include your comments, your deliberations here, as well as the, probably the findings of the, you know, the findings that you adopt denial and forward them to the design review board.
So if we deny it and they go with the same application to design review, the design review board approves it?
In theory, they could.
They could.
Yeah.
So this is just, we're here for nothing.
Well, I mean, you're talking about, you know, a hypothetical.
Yeah.
And kind of an extreme, in my view, unlikely hypothetical, but yeah, that could happen.
I think also the applicant, if you, if you chose to deny it tonight, Jillian, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant could appeal it to the city council.
Well, that's true as well.
That's true.
Okay. Any other questions? Clarifications? All right. So do I, I don't have to close anything. We're done, right?
Did Mr. Lee have anything else?
No, I, I think, I mean, I just like to, when you do your business, the proper paperwork needs to follow, otherwise you feel a little uneasy with that. But I think from the beginning too, you know, when I asked a question about the drainage and so on, I mean, I did have some uneasy feeling about the, the location of this project. So I think all that is coming out now. So, you know, I, I'm, you know, if this is where the buck stops, I'm willing to make the decision.
Very good. So if you.
But you said nothing.
Well, I can count votes. Ma'am, let's, we're ready to take a vote.
Sir, I'm sorry, ma'am. Should I hang on a second, please? What you probably should do, you don't have any findings for denial before you. Is that correct, Jeff? Right. So what you should probably do is continue for two weeks to allow the staff to review the tape and look at our notes here, what were your arguments that seemed to be most concerned? And we will bring those back to you in the form of findings and you can adjust them.
And they'll be here in three weeks.
I'm sorry, the next meeting.
It'll be on the sixth.
Yeah.
Tim, that, because of vacation schedules, that may not be possible to bring it back that quickly.
Okay, then it'll be, you tell me, Jeff.
Laura, what's, what's the?
The 20th is the next date after, August 20th.
August 20th would work for sure.
It'd be faster if it goes to design review with denial.
So then while we're setting this up and it's going to take that long anyways, you know, for our staff to kind of take a look at that, to make our, you know.
So am I hearing continual?
Yeah, but that's what it sounds like is going to happen.
Well, let's have a propose, a motion.
Okay. Who wants to make a motion?
You have to find the language findings.
So wait, if, if we deny this, we, we need the findings, right?
And they will.
They'll bring it back.
So your motion could be to continue it until August 20th for staff to prepare findings for denial.
Correct.
So, so I move that.
Okay. And can we add to that? And I'll, I'll second it with the amendment, a friendly amendment if, if Commissioner Yussain is, is amenable to that, is that with the recommendation that the additional materials be reviewed before any recent metal or appeals.
We're not asking for a survey. I think it would be totally unfair, unfair for them to.
Materials be verified. I didn't ask for a survey.
Okay.
That's because you had spoken about it. I just didn't want him to get it wrong.
Yeah. Good. I accept.
All right.
So you've made a motion for staff to look over the findings and bring it back, the denial findings in two to three weeks' time. And Ms. Landrigan augmented that by the material that are necessary for us to review again.
Do you want to bring it back on August 20th, a date certain?
I, I think we should.
I'm okay with that. I'll be on vacation. You'll have a lot of fun. I'm just kidding you. That's fine.
And we could also continue it if you would like to have it re-noticed. We could do that or if you can continue it to a date certain without re-notice.
I think it should be re-noticed.
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to open the public hearing.
No, you're right.
August 20th is good.
Without further notice.
Without further notice. No, sir. Ma'am, we're ready for a roll call.
Seconded the motion.
I'm sorry. Can I just have a point of clarification? Commissioner Landrigan, you meant that any, that the materials be reviewed for correctness for any future application?
Exactly.
Yes, not for your, not for the purposes of the findings coming back.
That's what I, that's what I stated. Thank you for clarifying that.
Planning Commissioners, Landrigan?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yussain?
Aye.
Chairperson, pro, tem, historian?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for all being here tonight and enjoy a good dinner.
Actually, can you all help?
That's closed.
Folks, thank you.
Item number seven, are there any planning? Would you please keep it down, sir?
We're still, we're still in session.
You can, you can go out. That's all right. Planning Commissioners. Planning commission items. Any old business?
We do, as far as planning commission items, we did get another appeal of another hillside home, so that would be scheduled for you coming up.
Hillside are fine.
Another hillside home, another couple of, probably another month or two.
Thank you. And are there any community involved in the pardon updates? None? Comments from commissioners?
I have one.
Please do.
The city of Glendale has been always in the forefront of promoting, advocating human rights issues, human rights violations, and also designated July 30th as a Comfort Woman Day. And this year, last year, we erected the statue, the peace statue. This year, in Alex Theater on July 27th, on Sunday evening at 7 o'clock, there is a huge performance. It's, it was reinterpreted as a cultural event to promote human rights issues associated with the Comfort Woman commemoration. So I invite everybody to come out to enjoy the show, 7 o'clock again, July 27th, Sunday evening. And we made a bookmarker that says, "To the Right Thing," and this is a actually short statement that was made by former Mayor Conterro, or Councilman Conterro, when he was addressing the, the group to, to promote this Comfort Woman issue. So I invite everybody to come out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the location?
Alex Theater and admission is free.
Great.
May I?
Of course.
And I would like to announce that the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation is having their annual golf tournament. It's going to be on the 23rd of July. You can still sign up and it's a lovely, it's gonna be at Shell Canyon, a beautiful golf course. And I hope that you will join us because all of the proceeds from this golf tournament goes to buying and maintaining open space in parks in Glendale. So I hope that we see a lot of you out there and thanks very much. We hope to have a beautiful day.
No other comments? We will conclude.
Thank you.
So move.
So move.